Good evening. It is six o'clock by my watch, and I will call to order the special session of the Auburn Planning Board for June 21st, 2022. I will begin with a roll call, and I will start at my far left.
Darren Finnegan.
Brian Dubois.
Paul Jacques.
Matthew Duval.
Evan Seer.
Stacy LeBlanc.
Tony Ferraro.
Riley Bergeron.
And tonight, we do have an associate member absent, Mr. Joshua Daigle. Tonight, we have our full contingency of regular members, so for this evening, Mr. Jacques will be acting as an associate member. That means that he will have full rights to ask questions, deliberate, be active within discussion, however, he will not be able to make motions or vote on motions during this meeting. Item number two on our agenda are the minutes of the May 3rd and May 10th meeting. Is there a motion to accept?
Before you entertain a motion, I'd like to just request from staff that in both sets of minutes that you make sure that my name is spelled correctly. There are two Ts in my name in the May 3rd minutes, there should be only one, and then there are some one L Duvals out there, so if you just scan it and make sure my name's spelled correctly, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Any other amendments?
I'd like to make motion to accept the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor? Minutes are accepted.
I'm abstaining.
Okay.
Because I missed a meeting.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing, text amendments suggested by council for the creation of a new form-based code zone, T-4.2B. We have several members of the public here tonight, so I would like to... Where did I put my notes? Provide a little explanation as to our process. The planning board will first hear from city staff, as well as other individuals that staff believes have pertinent information to provide. The board will ask questions of the staff. Because there's no direct applicant, we will not be hearing from an applicant or their agent tonight. We will then open it up to public comment. We will ask that members of the public speak at the podium. We'll ask that you begin by stating your name and address. You'll have five minutes to speak. When there's one minute remaining, I will try my best to remind you by letting you know one minute, so that you're aware of your time. After the public comment is concluded, the planning board will come back to deliberations and a final decision. It's important to note that with regard to this agenda item, the planning board is acting as an advisory board. That is to say, we do not have the final say as to whether or not T-4.2 is accepted as a zone. We also do not have direct... I don't want to say this. The whatever we give to the city council as an advisory opinion is subject to slight changes, I guess, by the city council, so it's important for members of the audience to know that we are not making a final decision tonight, we're simply acting as advisors to the city council. It's also important for people to know what it is that we are actually doing with regard to that advisory role. The planning board's role in situations like this is to move forward and take, for instance, a directive from the city council, that is, to look at the language for a new zone, and to determine whether or not that conforms to best practices in planning, as well as whether or not it fits the comprehensive plan and directives of the city council. Our job is not to determine whether or not Auburn should have this zone, that's a political decision that will be made by the city council, but rather whether or not the language they've given us conforms to the comprehensive plan and makes sense with regard to planning. So just so that we... So that everyone in the audience understands what will come out of tonight and what our role is within this process. Having said that, is staff ready to present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, go ahead.
Again, I think it's important to know for the public tonight that the first order of business for the planning board is to really look at the new proposal from the council. Basically, the council voted on May 16th of this year to ask the planning board to review the T-4.2. Not only to review 4.2, but to essentially establish a new zone. I think it's important to know that these changes, if we... If the planning board chooses to move this forward in a favorable recommendations, these changes will essentially could be addressed in the five areas that we could be presenting tonight. One is the Court Street, which we already voted on as... Which is 4.2, but that could be become 4.2B after we deliberate through the amendment to establish a new zone as T-4.2B. So the first order... That's the first order of business is going through this. And essentially, to go down through the 4.2B changes, the major changes is that... You can go to the next. Yep. So our comp plan really describes these five areas that we're talking about. Anything that you see in the green there, in the highlighted areas of the five target areas that we essentially will vote on tonight. But again, the first order of business is establishing this new zone. And it really... I think the council tried to recognize, and staff tried to recognize, what some of the concerns were from the public as we established 4.2. And they really took a look at businesses specifically in this zone, and I'm going to go down through what the recommendations are. And they include the following: All bed and breakfast establishments allowed with special exception approval from the planning board.
I apologize, Sean. Those of us that have been involved in this understand how that is a change. As you go through these, can you please, just for folks in the audience, let them know how that is a change to the T-4.2?
I could.
I apologize, I know I put you on the spot. I know it's going to come... Perhaps we can discuss... Let's assume it will come as a question from staff, so that... I mean, from the board, so that staff could, in a few minutes, think about...
How about I go down through this? And then, Eric, if you could go to our drive and show the codification, so we can see what the difference is.
Thank you.
We have it all redlined and ready to go, so that's something that we certainly can present to the planning board.
Okay. And again, I think that will be helpful for members of the public.
We didn't put it into this specific piece that we've got here shown, but we certainly could show that, and I've got it... It's part of your package, too, so the planning board knows.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Okay. Excellent. But is it the red line? Yep, okay.
Yep.
So we got it. Excellent. There's stuff ahead of me, so... So I'll just continue down through here. All, again, all bed and breakfast establishments allowed with special exception approval from the planning board. Residential facilities allowed with special exception approval from the planning board. Lodging allowed with special exception approval from the planning board. Personal services allowed with special exception approval from the planning board. Age-restricted retail would not be allowed, so that's, you know, any kind of marijuana shop or something like that would not be allowed. Restaurants with over 30 seats not allowed. Government offices would be allowed with special exception from the planning board. Parking requirements from public or private may be provided within 500 feet of the establishment. There's a change there from 1,000 feet, and then including 4.2, 4.1, and what would be 4.2B. Office service, retail use limited to 1,500 square foot footprint. And then, in addition to that, they must have included an upper-floor residential unit. So that means that it couldn't be a standalone business, right? There has to be something above it in terms of residential use, or, you know, some type of apartment building or something like that, so... No drive-through businesses allowed, no fast food restaurants, nothing like that. Multi-family allow with special exception approval from the planning board, and they're looking to go to a maximum of 14 units per acre. There could be a special exception beyond that, but again, it would take planning board approval. As we look at it, if we could bring that up... As we look at the codification, you can see the difference between what is 4.2 and then 4.2B, which is the highlighted in red. Again, bed and breakfasts would be allowed with special exception. That means that... So P means permitted, if people are looking at this information. So that means it could be approved at staff level at 4.2 currently right now, and what we're saying is, anything that is... If it would become 4.2B, it would require a planning board approval at this point. Community-based residential facilities, again, the difference between 4.2 and 4.2B is that right now, it would be approved at a staff level, and now it would need to go to planning board. So it's putting a lot more responsibility on the planning board, a lot of these items, and takes a little bit more of the public process into consideration. Keep scrolling down. Again, general retail, we highlight that because we're really restricting the type of retail and the size of the retail, and those are down in the special notes. We're age-restricted retail. Before, at 4.2, with planning board approval, they could be established, and now we're suggesting that they not be allowed in this zone. Restaurants up to 30 seats, that still remains the same. Restaurants over 30 seats, again, we're saying that those are not allowed, whereas in 4.2, they require planning board approval. Government offices, we're saying 4.2B would be allowed with planning board approval, whereas 4.2, they were not allowed. So I think that the city's looking at some public... Public safety buildings that would be included in these locations to provide services to the community, and so we're suggesting that they allow that with planning board approval. Going down into the notes, the parking requirements, we're adding the 500 feet setback. It was 1,000 feet, but we're adding 4.2B, T-4.2, and then T-4.1. And again, the four offices, services, retail uses, limited to 1,500 square feet footprint. And again, it must have an upper-floor residential unit with a drive-through access not allowed, so... And then again, densities to 14 dwelling units per net acre, unless a special exception subject to the planning board approval. These are the substantial changes. I do want to be clear that the existing 4.2 areas that was approved, say, between 2017 and 2019, we're not suggesting any of those areas change. We're just really looking at the Court Street area and then the four new areas that we covered in workshop the last meeting. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Questions from the staff?
I have a couple. So I'm just looking at the table you showed. Most of these changes move 4.2B in the direction of being a more residential area, with one exception, and that's the government offices. What's the thinking behind that? It doesn't... You know, it's prohibited in 4.2, but you want to permit it?
I think it was decided that because of the location of the new public safety building, they're thinking about a new public safety building, and this area would be included in that area, specifically the area that... In the Court Street area, that that would need to be addressed. It wouldn't currently meet the zoning requirements. It's... The existing lot right now is a smaller fire station, and they're looking to expand that and bring the police station there. So with that being said, it's already a public service building, and they're looking to expand that, and we want to make sure that it's a conforming lot to the current, you know, to the current zoning, so... So that was a correction that the council made, and the staff suggested that they do that, so we can address that situation now.
Okay. A second question. What are we doing with artist studios, performing arts center, et cetera? I mean, a blank call there, it doesn't seem.
So it's been reflected, and that wasn't something that was addressed by the council. That was something that was done in the codification, say, two, three years ago. So that could be a recommendation by the board that we address that at this point, but staff was very specific on exactly what the council's order was, the planning board, so we focused on that. We didn't add anything, we didn't sprinkle anything extra in here to correct anything, so that's more of a codification issue that we... That the board could make a recommendation to the council.
Okay, and I have one more question for now. So just to clarify, the exclusion of age-restricted retail means that a little corner store could not sell beer or tobacco products, correct? In addition to marijuana?
Historically, and I think we define it as it's stores that are primarily age-restricted, so if there was a convenience store, they could have some products that are age-restricted, but not primarily age-restricted retail. But they could, like Heathco's as an example, primarily sells food and takeout food, but they could also sell beer and wine and potentially tobacco.
Okay, and so that does include, then, marijuana?
I... The intent is to exclude marijuana stores. A marijuana store would typically sell mostly marijuana products, but I guess if Heathco's got license to kind of on the side do marijuana products, that might be something worth clarifying. You know, outright prohibition of marijuana businesses.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yes, I have a question. So regarding the office service and retail use limited to 1,500 square foot footprint must have an upper-floor residential unit, so was there any consideration into not having that upper-floor unit for planning board consideration? Like, it seems like very just kind of black and white. So if it doesn't have it, is there any opportunity for consideration without it? Where was the discussion around that?
There's... I think that's open for the board for discussion amongst the board. Again, we're going on very specific language. We wrote it exactly as the council's directive, and that was the language that they had used, so they were very specific in that recommendation.
So that's not coming from staff, that's directly coming from...
Correct.
Council.
Correct.
Yeah, that was one that struck me as well. I grew up in New Auburn on Enfield Street, across South Main Street for me, growing up was Gravel's Market, and then later it was Larry's Lunch. And it did have a residential unit, but the residential unit was in the basement because it was a walkout. Jonathan knows what I'm talking about, right? And so I thought, well, if topography allows, you know, why can't the retail be on top or adjacent to? So I'm glad that Stacy asked that question. Are there other questions?
There was specific discussion about that at the council meeting, and the end conclusion was that they wanted that residential component above, but...
Was the intent to limit the footprint of the lot needed?
I don't know if that was the intent or not.
Oh, we do have a council...
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I could speak to that. So the thinking behind this was really to eliminate the possibility of a freestanding retail shop like what you would normally see for like a chain, like a Dunkin' Donuts or something like that. Like, the thinking was to have some sort of a mixed-use building, which you would normally see in, like you were just talking about, New Auburn or even a downtown area, but not your typical dressed-up shop that you would see as like a chain.
So the intent was really to make sure that these exist in conjunction with residential use?
Exactly.
Okay.
Not necessarily upper.
And really, you know, to take it a step further, it's to encourage the owner-occupied business, you know, the smaller mom-and-pop type shops.
So was there any consideration to, if there wasn't the opportunity for the upper residential, to have like a special exception by the planning board to allow for a different alternative use? Or just, like, if they don't have it, like, then it seems like it's kind of a...
Right, yeah.
It's a dead end.
I think, yeah, I think that would be up for discussion. You know, we're pretty aware of the idea of just inserting businesses into a residential zone and...
Right.
Being very cautious about how that's done. And so I think that was... The thinking here was really to introduce it into an area that... In a manner that is more welcoming and...
Yep.
More befitting of a residential zone.
Good. I think that clarification helps with our discussion, yes.
Yeah, so along those lines, was there any talk about changing the max height of the buildings from three stories down to two?
No, I mean, that wasn't necessarily brought up. I think that that's something that you guys could certainly discuss. Yeah.
Other questions? I do have a question. On page 19 of 22, the red line version that you gave us under notes, Note 5, says density of 14 dwelling units per net acre. Can you explain what you mean by net acre versus gross acre? Or why you would say net acre versus just per acre?
Again, that was the specific language that the council used, but, you know, a net acre is essentially, you know, what is one acre? It's just another term for sum of one acre.
Okay. I ask, having been on the planning board for a long time, I know that certain developments require green space, parking is required, so on and so forth, and so when I read that, I read that to mean, you know, if you've got a one-acre lot, you don't have one net acre. You've got less than one acre, simply because of the way I've looked at things, which is why I'm asking. I think that if that is not the intent, that's... I know we're not about wordsmithing things right now, that's not necessarily what council's asking us to do, but to me, that would create a potential issue moving forward.
Is it after setbacks? Is it after, you know, certain requirements from planning?
I think quite often it would mean kind of after you take out the... Any road right-ofways, if you were doing a subdivision, the remaining developable land, after those right-ofways. It could include setbacks, although I guess that would be open for debate, but certainly the road right-ofways, if there are roads being created.
So is there an ability to articulate a definition for that if the language stays in?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess it's, you know, if you're looking at multiple lots, it's that the land that takes to build the roads and get the utilities and the sidewalks and things, anything that would be... Become accessible by more than one person, and it's separated by more than three lots, so those are the... That's the net area.
And so if that's the case, what is, in terms of, like, we're just looking at spatial area, what is the net impact of using the net acre versus just the total area for a given lot? If we use the term net acre, does it reduce density, or does it increase the density allowed?
I think overall, if you take all the acreage in the zone, if you looked at one of these zone changes, right, if we looked at this Court Street area of 1,900 acres, it shrinks that number down for amount of buildable land that's, you know, per... Units per acre. You know, I think if we looked at 555 Court Street right now, we put all the... We put those factors in, we're at like five units per acre, six units per acre. Not with the total build-out that they potentially could go to, but right now, as it's built and as it's permitted through that whole entire lot, it's about five units per acre, six units per acre. So that is a good point.
So I know that Mr. Labonte's here, so my assumption is that he will speak to us at some point about gridded neighborhoods, because we did receive correspondence from him. So thinking about this, and looping back to Mr. Duval's point and question, if a developer were to develop 20 acres, but is building roads a gridded network that they want the city to take over? Those roads are... That what will become the public right-ofway is subtracted from the amount of acreage that they have, so they...
Correct.
So to answer this question, you are reducing density... Okay. A question was asked about government offices. Why are government offices and buildings not allowed either as a permitted use or a special exception in every single zone? It would seem that if we need a new fire station to service the community, we would want to be able to build one, or if we determined that we were going to expand EMT services, that we would want to be able to do that, and if we needed a separate building to do so, we'd be able to do so. Is there a reason why?
Yeah, I think we're following the council's directive on those changes, but I think if you were to propose a new fire station, say, on Davis Avenue in a neighborhood where we've never had one, I think that could be pretty impactful. You know, maybe something to consider is limiting those... Maybe allowing them in more form-based code districts, but limiting them to arterials and potentially where they already exist, being expanded, rather than a new location that would be an option to kind of eliminate that fear of having a new ambulance dispatch in the middle of a residential neighborhood away from an arterial.
I guess it just seems to me to set us up to look as though we are doing some sort of spot zoning in the future. If it's determined that a government facility is needed within a neighborhood, whatever that government facility is, and then at that point, we go and change everything for that singular... For that building, for that use, that, to me, would seem to be an inappropriate use of planning, I guess. So that's why I asked that question.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Number four, personal...
Number four, personal services allowed. Number nine, office service and retail use limited. Help me and maybe others by defining personal services and office space. Is a one-man-band CPA considered office or a personal service?
The personal service is more something like a salon, you know, a barber shop. A CPA would typically be more of an office category.
Professional service versus person.
Yep, yep. And we do allow, in any residential unit throughout the city, we already have an allowance for those small office uses, regardless of the zone. If it's the owner-occupant that operates it, it can be done as a home occupation with up to one employee from outside the household. So that's something that is allowed. That one-person shop is already allowed throughout the residential zones of the city.
Yep.
With up to one outside employee plus family members.
The size is reduced, there's some small restrictions, not a lot of parking available. So you notify a butters, and they can essentially have their own home occupation. The CPA example that you used would probably fall under the home occupation, which is allowed in any residential zone in the city.
And yet, we've seen less and less of them.
We get quite a few applications. They don't necessarily come for the planning board, but we certainly deal, as staff, we deal with them every day, and we're constantly sending notifications out to a butters. And there's some real interesting small little businesses in Auburn, to be honest with you. You never thought about 3D printing and shipping across the country, and this guy's doing it in his house and making specialty parts or something. It's happening here in Auburn, and it's kind of neat. The interesting part of the job is to look at some of these small home occupations and see how people make a living. I think it's really neat. And what really drives a lot of that is that, you know, are they going to have a sign? You know, do they require parking? Are they going to create a lot of traffic? Those are usually some of the flags that we say that we, you've got to have a home occupation, we've got to notify the butters and let them know, let folks know that you're essentially running a business at this location.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board for staff? All right.
Do you have the staff suggestions? I guess I didn't read it, so if I could take a moment to read the staff suggestions. Staff suggests, "Planning board discussed the proposal as we did and hold a public hearing today." "Staff recommends that the board forward a positive recommendation to council supporting the proposed changes provided by the city council to include the adjusted text to create a new Form-Based Code T-4.2B."
I do have one more question, actually, as I'm thinking about this. The front setbacks, were they affected at all by the council directive?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
If the front setbacks were affected at all by the council directive?
I think that's important to note. If we go to the codification sheet, what is included there? And we're not suggesting that we're changing, and I think it's important. It came up in the 555 Court. And I don't know the version that you guys are looking at, but I know that the board's packet includes the special text that has access ways and parking lots for setbacks. So it's not just the public right-of-way, but I'm glad that you pointed that out, that it's a typical, and I think on that one, it's a typical, there it is, right there, access ways and parking lots, typical. That's the setback requirements, that's how it's measured. So essentially, if you've got a development, you know, a multifamily complex, we can measure the setbacks from the access ways, which could be parking lots, or from, which hopefully, most of these projects will have sidewalks. So we can measure that setback from that, not necessarily the property line at the front row if it's a larger project. So that was a correction that we had made earlier.
The intent of that, I assume, being to push what one would assume is a larger building, if it's a multi-unit, farther back from the street?
Right. That's correct. Create a buffer and be less intrusive to the neighborhood.
And we did invite Dana Staples here tonight, as well as a member of the comp plan committee, to talk about what the comp plan committee was thinking when making those recommendations.
Yeah, I think that, I would assume that members of the board would like to hear that before we hear from members of the public, yep?
Sure, yeah. So I guess pertinent to the last question, one thing that I was definitely going to bring up tonight is that all along, the plan of doing any rezoning is to, one of my biggest goals is to reduce non-conforming lots in the city. And after taking a closer look at this before coming to the meeting tonight, it became apparent to me that maybe those front setbacks should be looked at a little bit, because you just don't want to add a new zone and then create non-conforming lots unintentionally. So I think that's something you guys could take a look at for sure. So speaking to the comp plan, you know, I guess I could just give you a quick overview. I don't want to take up a lot of time here, but the comp plan began back in 2020, November. A group of people from Planning Board Council, the previous comp plan committees, and a few other neighborhood people came together to look at a few sections of the comp plan, one of them being zoning. We broke up into groups, and we would meet monthly as a big group and also monthly as smaller groups. So the zoning group was comprised of Counselor Tim McLeod, Mayor Jason Levesque, and myself. And at all of those meetings, Eric was there, as well as Megan from the permitting department. They were all public meetings, but nobody else attended. So we looked at every single one of the zones in the city. We had lots of goals. One of my big goals was to eliminate, or not eliminate, but reduce the number of zones. We had 30-some-odd zones. Wanted that number to get a lot smaller. So that was one of the goals, and that's largely what you're seeing tonight, is the reduction of some of those. You know, another thing that we tried to do was to take a good look at how we could improve or not increase the number of housing units allowed in the city of Auburn to deal with some of the housing shortages that we're seeing. And we found that the best way to do that was to increase density in certain areas. So that's another thing you're seeing tonight. And then, you know, I brought to this, I live in New Auburn, just off South Main Street. When I moved into my house, there were businesses up and down South Main Street that have since closed. Zoning makes it illegal for those businesses to reopen, because they're now residences. It was my intention to allow some businesses inside of a residential zone to increase neighborhood, community, have focal points in the neighborhood. I know in the New Auburn area, we have Wheeler's Corner Store, which is a place you see a lot of people in the neighborhood going. In Lake Street area, you've got Pizza Market, you've got Heathco's. But aside from that, there's not tons of neighborhood stores. I'm very passionate about walkability in the town. One thing I've learned throughout lots of complete street meetings is that no matter what you do to the city streets, a place isn't walkable unless you have a place to walk to. And these neighborhood businesses give you a place to walk to. So that was another one of my goals. And one more thing that we looked at was when I got out of college, I moved to Auburn, and I wanted an apartment. That was one of the things that, I couldn't afford a house, but I wanted to live in an apartment. So I looked around the neighborhood, and I noticed that there were apartment buildings next to stores. But there weren't apartment buildings next to people. Why? Why do apartment buildings have to be in a business area? So to me, it kind of allows people to live with people, housing to be with housing. To me, it seems like it's a natural progression to allow people to live next to, you know, not necessarily having to have a single-family home everywhere. So that was part of our thinking. You know, I could go into lots of detail, lots of meetings we went to, and any other questions you guys had, I'd be happy to answer, but just a quick overview.
Are there any questions for Mr. Staple with regard to the comprehensive plan? Did you have a question?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that's helpful.
We have, we speak loud, we do not hear anything. It's like you have a quiet conversation.
Yeah, I will, yeah, I will agree with you. It is very difficult to hear, yeah.
The mumbling will appear.
It is very difficult sometimes to hear some of you, so I will concur with her.
Yes, we understand that. If you ever have an issue hearing what we're saying, just say so, and we will make sure that we move the mics closer, and if you would like us to repeat something, we are more than happy to do so. The intent is not to...
Can the mics be turned up in this room?
That's an excellent question. I don't know.
They can be. They should be loud enough, as long as people get close enough to trip the mic on.
All right, so are there any other questions from the planning board for staff? At this time, I'd entertain a motion to enter into the public comments section of the hearing.
So... Second?
I'll take the motion here. Second, all those in favor? So at this time, we will invite members of the public to speak. Members of the public are invited to address the board regarding this topic. That is to say, one moment, I just want to make sure I go through the rules so everyone understands. Regarding this topic, that is to say, if you have a comment specific to another topic, that is to say, I know that we're going to be looking at some different neighborhoods later tonight. If you have a comment specific to one of those neighborhoods, your comment may be best saved for when we discuss that neighborhood. Specifically, right now, we're looking for comments regarding 4.2B as a zone. Members of the public are asked to speak into the microphone provided. That's because these meetings are recorded. We'd ask that you start by stating your name and address, and if you're speaking on behalf of someone else, to please state that prior to the comment, to your comments to the board. We would ask that speakers please limit their comments to five minutes and remain on topic. And again, I will try my best to remind folks when there's one minute left. I've got my timer out here. Each speaker will be asked to speak only once during each public comments section of a hearing, unless the board chooses to allow additional time. The rules of the board indicate that this time is intended for the board to hear from the public, and it is generally not the policy of the board to answer questions during public comments section of a hearing. That's important. Oftentimes, members will ask direct questions. What you need to know is that we will take notes during the public comment, and we will try our best to address as many of those questions that are asked, but we don't answer those questions directly during public comment. In some very limited circumstances, the board may seek clarification from staff during public comment if an issue is raised that we believe needs to be addressed directly by staff at that time. And we may ask for clarification of a member of the public who's addressing the board to better understand what they are saying. So having said that, go for it.
Scott Berry, 179 Davis Avenue. I would like to thank everyone here for their work on upgrading the zoning regulations. It has been a long time coming. We've come a long way since we wanted to join Lewiston and Auburn and combine them. Auburn has done well. We have grown. You have helped us grow. It is fantastic that the homeowners can upgrade their homes as they wish within reason by relaxing the setbacks in density. It's great. Now they can have maybe their mothers, mothers-in-laws, people move back home if they got to, especially the way the economy is. I think we need this, and I think it's going to help out Auburn and all its citizens. Some people do not like progress. I like progress. Now, the only problem that, well, a couple of problems I got with it, is sign blight. I'm going to give you an example. You've got to be mindful of what's going on here. I am mindful of what you're doing. I think it needs a little bit more time, but I'm going to give you an example of sign blight here in Auburn. They did a new street on Lake Street. You all know that. You look at Lake Street, one section, you've got signs growing up maybe every 10 feet. That's sign blight. I'm worried about signs in residential areas, and I hope you take that in consideration. Same with the lighting. What are you going to do with the neighbors, especially if you put stores or something in the neighborhood? You've got to be mindful of what you are changing and how you're going to affect the people in that neighborhood. And again, aesthetics. I'm worried about the aesthetics in the nice neighborhoods. Are you going to tear down the building and put up a big, modern building? Is it going to be a concrete block building? I think you guys should be mindful about the neighborhoods and what's going to be built there. That's about it. And in closing, I want to say, there should have been better leadership to get this through. There should have been more out there. I know the mayor has been trying his best, but there should have been more done to get everything out there for a positive view, which you have not done. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jeffrey Harmon. I live at 34 Vista Drive. I guess broadly, my comment about this adoption of the 4.2B zone would be that there was inadequate public input and there was an inadequate planning process. While I appreciate what Counselor Staples said about the comprehensive plan, we're not talking about the comprehensive plan here. We're talking about the details of defining a zone that can later be applied to districts within the city. I think it's important to understand how we got here. As you heard Counselor Staples say, even at the comprehensive plan process, there were a couple members of the public. How did we get to this specific language that John said twice in the meeting tonight? The staff did not change from the actual language provided by the city council, meaning where was the city staff planning process in this? And let's talk about where that language came from. What happened, if you recall, was the council was talking about the application of the 4.2 zone to the Court Street district, and there was a lot of public pushback on that. The mayor and two counselors, in the course of a week, based on that public input, came up with this 4.2B standard. No public hearing, no workshops that engaged the public, no community outreach. They created whole cloth 4.2B and brought it to the council. And the council has sent that back to you for adoption. So that doesn't seem to me to be the appropriate planning process, and it certainly does not conform to the best practices for Form-Based Code development, which requires significant public engagement. In fact, if you look around the country, where Form-Based Code implementations have failed is typically the primary reason is lack of public engagement. The last thing that I would say is, while I appreciate the work that they did do to come up with some of these amendments, there's five areas that were never addressed, that need to be addressed, and which the public, more than a few people coming up with five minutes of comment to provide input... minutes of comment to provide input, and that's building height, building size, the setbacks, and I realize the setbacks aren't different from 4.2, but they are a dramatic deviation from the residential 4.1 standards. I would also say density is an issue. And I think people lose sight of the fact that a year from now, there'll be a 2 or 2.5 multiplier on that 14 units per acre pursuant to LD 2003, for which the city will have nothing to say. The multiplier can be applied by an applicant and it'll have to be acceptable. And the last thing I would, when brought up, is net acreage. I would point out a couple of things. I've had detailed discussions, Eric and I had detailed discussions about how this is calculated, and I agree. It's the law lefts the street. So the example of 555 Court Street, yes, it comes out, as John said, with what they are currently permitted for to about five units per acre, but that's not what they can build there. Under the current standard, you take the road off, you get the net acreage, and you multiply it by the density standard. In that case, 13.9 times 14 before the state multiplier. And in the form-based code, there was a discussion about this earlier, you can build out up to 70% of the footprint. It's in the staff paper. So I understand the pressure that the planning board's under to return something by the 7th of July to the city council, but there needs to be more public engagement, more planning that goes on before you start adopting zones that'll have impacts on thousands and thousands of people when you apply it to these districts in the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board?
My name's Jim Lynch. I'm a resident of 80 Shepley Street in Auburn. And the issue for me is, quote Shakespeare, "To be or not to be." And the question is practicality. And to have a 14-unit, multi-unit facility on one acre of land, you have to figure there's at least probably two cars per unit. That's 28 cars. Are you going to build a parking garage next to this facility? I think we need to be practical, ladies and gentlemen. We have an Auburn mall that is half-empty. We have 59 square miles of boundary, land within our boundaries. The island of Manhattan is 22 miles, so we've got three times more land area in this city than Manhattan, New York. And I feel that we need to be practical and we want to preserve our residential neighborhoods. I think that's the key to home values, and I think that's the key to the pursuit of happiness in the city of Auburn, to have that residential area be yours and not encroached by commerciality. I think there's plenty of areas in the town where you can do that. With 59 miles of square area within the boundaries of Auburn, it's doable to me. I just think it needs further discussion, as the gentleman said previously to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board?
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Dunn. I live at 530 Court Street. I must say, at this point, I am confused and frustrated. I continue to hear talk of the comprehensive plan, amendments to chapters waiting for approval, form-based code terms, all kind of thrown around at these meetings, seemingly to legitimize whatever is happening here with the board and the city council. I note that much of the work done to revise the comprehensive plan was done during COVID pandemic times with very little public input. Basically, we weren't allowed to have more than 50 people in a building, so it made it hard to have too much of us involved. You want us to believe that you know what you are doing and that this is what is best for our city. I am not convinced. I have been reading the comprehensive plan, trying to make sense of it all myself. I did find in Section B, Land Use Policies, it says, "Allow infill development and redevelopment in established residential neighborhoods that is compatible with existing development patterns and densities." In Section H, Community Development Policies, H2 Housing, Strategy 2.2 and 2.3, quote, "Review and revise zoning requirements as needed to allow for redevelopment and infill development on vacant lots that is in character with the neighborhoods in terms of lot sizes and density, frontage setbacks, and similar dimensional requirements." Over the last several months, I have been in attendance at all of these meetings, questioning the T 4.2 zoning ordinance that has been approved and applied to the Court Street area so far, and the almost immediate approval of the development plan for 555 Court Street. It still seems to me that I can't do anything about it, that a three-story, five-building apartment complex, Phase 1, is not compatible or in character with the existing neighborhoods in any way, and really in most of Auburn. The T 4.2 ordinance is not consistent or in character with existing neighborhoods, yet it was passed by the city council and by the planning board. This is what creates confusion. Why do we have a comprehensive plan if it's not what you're using to drive your actions? It doesn't seem consistent. You said at the beginning of this meeting that your job was to determine whether the language conforms to the comprehensive plan. I'm not sure, based on what I'm hearing, what I'm seeing, and what's written in the plan. Aside from that, residents have expressed concerns, many concerns, repeatedly about the rate of density increase from four units per acre to now 14, maybe, but it was 16 for 4.2. Again, confusion. Which is it? What will it be? What do we really want to see? Residents have expressed concerns about the rate of density, building heights, setbacks, parking, and traffic. All of these have virtually been ignored. So these shenanigans continue. Now we are here, and we want to change the ordinance to 4.2B. We just changed it to 4.2. 4.2B still allows many of the things that 4.2 did. I don't see a lot of change. It's minimal. It wasn't worth your time when you had the chance to make those revisions the first time. It wasn't worth the council's time when they had thoughts and concerns about it but passed it anyway, and now here we are, looking at a reviewed model. That is frustrating. It's confusing. How do you expect the residents to know and understand what's happening for our city when it doesn't appear that we all do in this room, the ones making decisions? Thank you. I'm almost finished.
No, I'm lenient. You've got one minute.
Thank you. It seems there has been no regard for the voices of the residents. Our concerns have not been adequately accounted for in this new T 4.2 ordinance. We are still concerned about the rate of density, the building heights, the setbacks, the parking or lack thereof, and traffic concerns that will be increased with this development. This is what has led to frustration. When will the city council, staff, and planning board decide that our concerns are valid and use them to create ordinances that make more sense? It seems like now is the time, before we have to create 4.2C and D and E. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Maggie Taylor, 63 Loring Avenue. I am comfortable saying that I don't know enough about this yet to have an opinion, but I do have questions, and I know you can't answer them live, so I'll just get them out and maybe they'll be addressed later. I definitely understand and agree with the need for more public engagement. I literally was not aware of this rezoning, this meeting, or the comprehensive plan until three days ago, when this went to my previous address in green. So that was a surprise. I'm curious about the environmental impact. Was an assessment done? The zoning area falls in between Andruscoggin and Little Andruscoggin River, so that's a substantial impact to the environment, I would assume. And then, within one of the areas in the zoning, we also have the Houston Land Trust, which has lots of wildlife, foxes, turkeys, deer, tons of wildlife, so I'd be curious about the impact to the environment. I'm trying to understand the purpose of this rezoning. The gentleman over here mentioned it's to reduce non-conforming lots, which makes sense, but he also mentioned there's a goal of reducing the number of different zones, and I'm not sure why that's necessarily the right goal. And again, like I said, I'm here to get information. I don't have an opinion yet, but that question came to mind. Residential facilities will be allowed with special exceptions, 14 dwelling units per net acre. I second what the gentleman a minute ago said about, you know, considering how many cars per unit and how many stories and parking, and that's a substantial-sized building, and that's going to increase noise and traffic and just overall population density, which I get that's kind of the goal here, but it needs to be done carefully and with consideration. I personally chose my house in New Auburn because it's quiet, it has a lot of green area around it, it's near a school, it's a safe area, not a lot of traffic. So the thought of that changing drastically, you know, apartment buildings popping up, businesses, more roads, all of that, that's definitely of concern. Not that I would be completely opposed, but I just want to have a better understanding of what that impact is going to look like. And I'm curious about alternative housing options, such as all these vacant mills and factories that are right in the heart of the city. Why aren't those being utilized for additional housing and businesses rather than tearing up the existing neighborhoods that are very residential and making huge changes there? And then my last question or concern is about easements, right-of-way roads, basically, so it ties back to more traffic, more people, more noise. And as a parent, I'm a little concerned about crime and safety. That definitely comes to mind when we talk about higher population density. So those are my areas of concern, questions that I would like to get answers to at some point.
Generally, we don't, again, I said, ask questions, but you had tied a question to nearly every one of your concerns. I'll stop the time so that I'm not taking away from you. Did you, you just mentioned the concept of crime and safety. Did you have a question for us that you wanted us to be able to ask of staff, or was that primarily just a concern?
It's a general concern because I understand that to answer that question, you would have to know the amount of density, population increase. You can't just say, oh, well, crime's going to be. I get you can't answer that without some data. So that is just a general concern that I would like to have a better understanding around the impact.
And again, I apologize for interrupting. It was just, you had a question for every single one of your other concerns. I wanted to make sure I didn't miss a question for that one.
Well, that was the end of my question, so I'll yield the floor.
Thank you very much.
And just a reminder, we're getting some feedback from the video. If people, especially with a mask, can speak closer to the microphone.
Okay.
So you can hear yourself coming back through the speakers.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board specifically on the 4.2B zone?
Maureen O'Brien, 42 Winter Street. I just want to make a statement regarding the process that we're going through here. I don't think we should have to get permission, i.e. get a ticket, to participate in these meetings, whether they're the planning board or the city council. I don't like that, going to city council meetings and then to the planning board. It seems like all the decisions are being bounced back and forth between the two, saying that neither is responsible for the decisions. What we really need is a meeting for the whole city to be invited, to participate in a facility large enough to contain everyone, so that everyone gets a chance to address their concerns.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board with regard to the T 4.2B zone?
I don't want to take a lot of your time. My name is Mona Irvin. I live at 177 Cook Street. I've been there for 43 years. When I moved there, I never intended to stay in New Auburn or on Cook Street. Forty-three years, I'm still there, and I love it, and everybody in my neighborhood loves it. My neighbors are here, and they've been there for 60 years, and we've had other neighbors that were there before the millennium started. We love our neighborhood, and we don't like changes being made to our neighborhood. And one of the things I see in this comprehensive plan that is totally unacceptable is a multi-dwelling unit of 14. We don't need that. We don't have the space or the capacity for that. Mr. Lynch said earlier that you multiply 14 by 2 because those people are going to have automobiles. That's going to add to the congestion. That's going to add to the pollution, and adding 14 more units is going to add more children to our schools. Can our schools handle that? That's another, I haven't heard anybody mention anything about the schools and what can happen in our schools. Are they able to deal with all these new children coming in? And very important to me, more important than anything else as well, is the congestion. I live on Cook Street, and several of you gentlemen and ladies here said you came from New Auburn. Well, you know Pulserford Park, and you know Pulserford Park is on the corner of Cook Street and Ninth Street, and it is a well-used, well-run Little League baseball park. We drove here tonight, and there were probably 50 cars lined up and down Cook Street, parents, grandparents, friends, and relatives watching a Little League baseball game. In its infinite wisdom, the city several years ago decided to put a sidewalk on our street, which greatly reduced the size of our street. So now people who park on Cook Street, you have one car going this way, one car going that way. They can't do it because the street is too narrow and you have a car parked there. If you're going to allow multiple units of 14, that's going to add to the congestion, that's going to add to the danger, that's going to add to the opportunity for children who are in the park playing, because they've got a sibling that's in the game, and mom and dad are watching the game, and the siblings are playing. A ball goes out in the street, a kid goes out after the ball, and there's a car coming up. I haven't heard anything at all about the potential for danger by adding multiple units, especially in neighborhoods like ours on Cook Street, where the streets are very, very narrow, and I know that there are narrow streets elsewhere in this city. I'm glad the city in its wisdom sought to give us a sidewalk, but they didn't do anything about improving the quality of the street for the safety of the people who walk there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board on this topic?
Good evening. My name is John Cleveland. I live at 183 Davis Avenue in Auburn. I wanted to speak tonight about the process, because I think the process is extremely important. That is, how you interact with the citizens of Auburn. I've been pretty proactive in this. I've been trying to follow it closely. I tried to, I signed up to get notices. I didn't get the notices, unfortunately. The notices only go out two business days before the meetings come. So just trying to access the information, just trying to get a sense of what the comprehensive plan was, which wasn't posted until yesterday, by the way, of what the whole comprehensive plan is, so we could see what the consistency issues are, and to look at the particulars of this brand-new zone, 4.2, 22 pages long. I was only able to find it by going through the documents late on Monday because they were tucked away someplace else. City Hall was closed on Monday. I couldn't call and get any questions or answers because the employees weren't here. So the process is important. How do people, the citizens of this city, participate in a thoughtful and thorough way when you have such a short notice to even get the information, and you're only allowed a few minutes to make a statement, and you can't even get really into a conversation about what's going on? You know, what are the building size? What are the heights? What is setback? What's the traffic? What's the parking? What's the parking? What kinds of businesses really are going to be allowed? You can't know that until you look at the documents, and the documents aren't available in a timely way. So the process should be that you provide a much more open and conversational kind of process, so that the citizens who own property, who live here, can participate in what's going on here, and not have to come only partly prepared because you can't get access to the information in a timely way. So I don't see the reason why we have to have a meeting tonight and decide whether or not you're going to adopt it or not. I think a time should be taken to do the proper kind of planning by this board and to have a conversation and input from citizens across this city. I mean, what is the rush, really? What's pushing these things going forward? This is much more of an exclusive process rather than an inclusive process. You don't build trust and confidence and buy-in and understanding with these kinds of complicated processes without adequate access to information to make thoughtful decisions going forward. Voting on creating a new zone and then applying it all over the city in one night? Really? That's how fast we have to move? We don't have the time to participate and have a conversation with our citizens. I don't think this is really a well-thought-out and executed process.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the 4.2B?
Yeah, hi. I'm Ryan Smith. I live at 11 Harris Street. So something with this 4.2B, I see there's, there are a couple of uses that are being changed, which is good in a way. I mean, myself personally, I still don't like the allowed uses and how drastically they change from the previous zoning. With that said, I have one sort of caveat that I saw with the 4.2B, and that is the density. It says 14 units per acre, which is made to seem like a compromise from 16, but it's actually not a compromise at all, because it says 14, or you can get more with special approval. And, you know, we just had a special approval in April, and I've seen how that process works. So I'd like to see just a full point, full stop cap on density like it was before, like it is in many zones. Because if you're going to say 14, or you can do more, a special exception, just come to us and ask, you should just not put a density cap at all, because that's exactly what it's telling people. We can also look at new state legislator coming down the pipeline that would allow affordable housing to multiply the density even more. So I would just like to see a full hard-stop cap, closer to 10 to 12 units per acre, because that's better matches the area here, because we do see, these neighborhoods are mainly single-family, which is clearly changing. But they, you can see homes on an eighth of an acre here or there, and, you know, that's eight units per acre. So I don't think it's unreasonable to increase the density from what it was, I believe, four units an acre. I just think that we need to make a hard cap. So that's all I have.
Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board on this specific topic?
We do have people in the other room, so I'll ask them to start coming over.
One moment. I'm going to ask, we now have speakers from the other room, so I'd ask people in the audience to please resume respectful silence for the speakers. You are all set to go ahead whenever you would like.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Jamie Rebisi-Braley. I'm at 325 Minute Ave. We heard a lot tonight about appearances, about setbacks, storefronts looking like residences, and there are many beautiful diagrams in the comprehensive plan, showing how stately proposed new buildings should look like in our city. A comprehensive plan that we citizens had no say in. Let me tell you that in all honesty, that we all know as Auburn residents, being an Auburn citizen is not about appearances. Being an Auburn citizen is about being a community. A healthy community that thinks more about living than about putting on appearances. A healthy community that has clean water, more green space, more wildlife sanctuaries, not 14 apartment condos that I'm sure are not being considered to be built as affordable housing, which is something that we need. But have you even asked us? No, you're not really even asking yourselves. Stated in the opening of this meeting was that you're not here to answer any of our questions. So when is that meeting? Because a lot of us would love to attend.
I apologize. We will certainly answer any of your, I've paused your time, I'm not going to take your time. I just want to let you, we are writing down your questions, and we will answer any of your questions. I just really wanted to let people know that we don't have the final say. This is City Council, and if you are passionate about this, do not consider this the last meeting that you should attend. You should really attend the City Council meetings as well. I apologize for interrupting.
That's okay. That was the end of it, but I would like everyone that has come, because there's a very large nice turnout. Hi, Janine. A very nice turnout tonight. And I really would encourage everyone that even if you just say, hi, my name is, this is my address, and I oppose what you're doing, do it. This is our only time, this is the first time we've had, and I really hope that you give us more chances to talk about this, because as you can see, I am passionate about it, because I do love this community, and I want it to stay safe and healthy. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, were there any other members of the public?
Someone's coming.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd ask them to start coming over if they would like to speak.
My name is Caitlin Mahoney, and I live on Vicary Road. So I actually just moved to Auburn, and I moved here because where I lived before used to be a farming residential area, and I come from Massachusetts. And I watched my community just change so drastically in the last 20 years, that it became so congested and so, like, the quality of our neighborhood just went so downhill, that when I came up here to Maine and to Auburn, I fell in love with the fact that you're able to kind of get back with nature. So I don't know too much about your comprehensive plan. I just received this notice, but it scared me enough to come here tonight to listen to what you have to say and to see what you're planning. And, you know, I'm all for progression in some ways, but I think that it's important to keep in mind, keep the residential zones residential. I don't agree with putting 14 dwelling units on a one-acre lot. It's really not that big, and I really don't want an apartment building next to my beautiful new home that I just bought. That I take pride in the fact that I was able to move to Auburn and become a part of this beautiful community. And that's it.
Thank you.
My name is Dale Gagnon, and I live at 70 East Bates Street. And quite frankly, all the land is taken up. I don't know where you would put an apartment building without taking eminent domain, you know, land for people. You invite us here for this zoning change, but yet you didn't even give us any notice that you were going to drop a facility for people with special needs that are violent and wander away and go into people's property and tell the owner to leave. It's a nuisance, and quite frankly, the staff are nuisance also. Some of them are very professional. I would say the most of them are. But the shift change is at 12 o'clock. It's a sleepy, little quiet. It's one block around there, it's small, and I know that it qualifies under the Americans with Disabilities Act if there's less than eight people. And there's also an army of cadre or assistants. It's been disconcerting for me. I had PTSD.
I'm sorry.
It's increased the amount of people that have video cameras and...
I apologize for interrupting. I've stopped your time, so I will not be taking away from your time while I make this comment. It sounds to me as though you have a concern about a specific use that's already been implemented?
Yeah, yeah. It was dropped in there. It was, there were five houses that were built in the last few years there.
Do your comments primarily concern that facility?
Yes, yes. It's an LLC. It's a business, but it does qualify under the Disabilities Act, except for it is a nuisance house as well as the house next to it.
So, sir, I worry that it's disconnected enough from the discussion that we're having that we won't be able to address your concerns?
Well, I'm also worried about where you're going to put the next apartment building on East Bates Street. Is that going to be going further up, closer to the bridge? Are there plans already for that?
We generally don't answer specific questions. We haven't seen plans. So what I'm actually going to do is, I'm going to pause time, and I know we have three staff members. It sounds like you have a specific concern. Could we, could a staff member sort of maybe just step out and take down brief notes? And if you could let a staff member know the specific address that you're discussing?
Sure. Just in reference to all these apartment buildings, the population in Maine is actually going down, and you're trying to surpass Bangor in population. And the people in Auburn like Auburn the way it is, and then you want to overtake Lewiston as the second largest city. I worked in Lewiston for a long time and looked forward to coming home to Auburn, and when I looked for an apartment or a house, I stayed in Auburn. That's all I have to say. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And like I said, I worry that we, sir, I apologize, Mr. Gagnon. I'm going to ask Mr. Blay if he could just briefly write down the address, speak to you outside, and briefly ask you, only because the concerns you have are really best directed at staff, and since they're here, I'd like them to be able to take that information down for you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm working with Mr. Gagnon and the Auburn Police Department on that specific concern with the two properties near his home, and whether or not they meet the disorderly housing ordinance.
All right. I just wanted to make sure that we addressed that, because it's disconnected enough from what we're going to talk about, that it's not something we'll be addressing as a board tonight. Are there any other members of the public, either here or in the community room? I understand the community room speakers are on, so hopefully they can hear this call. Oh, could you, just make sure you speak into the mic, because it's recorded, so start with your name and address, please.
My name is Mary Fuller, and I live on Lake Auburn Avenue, right across from Washburn School. I've seen it grow in that neighborhood to the point where there was no cars hardly on our street in a whole day, and now it's like zoom, zoom, zoom. They have put in those raised things in the street to slow people down. I can't imagine in a neighborhood that probably used to be at like 7 o'clock, you could hear a pin drop, and now you listen to motorcycles and cars and everything going by there. I can't imagine any more growth in that area. I really can't. And I don't understand the 4.2B and the 4.2, the T-4.2. I don't know what you're changing there, but I don't foresee wanting any changes. At one time, they wanted to direct traffic off from Center Street down our street and make a circle there, and that's not wanted either. I mean, if they do that, I'll just be moving. I agree with this meeting. They put these group homes in any place that they want, and you have to listen to the noise of somebody coming in at midnight or whenever they decide to have shift changes. It's not nice. I'm retired, and I want peace and quiet, like a lot of other people do in the neighborhoods. I don't want a store on the corner, and I don't want a pot shop on the corner near the school. I mean, there should be some consideration, and there needs to be something done about the kinds of people that are living near the school already.
Thank you very much.
I'm Barbara McGivern, and I live at 55 Winter Street. Mr. Cleveland and Elizabeth Dunn spoke about the rapid pace of the zone changes here, and it reminded me of a communication to you on the Planning Board from Saleem Firth, thanking you for not only implementing the changes that he'd advised the city on, but the speed with which you'd done it. And I would just like to see an airing of the behind-the-scenes influence of Mr. Firth, who's with the Mercatus Institute at George Mason University, which was founded by the Libertarian Brothers, the Cokes, and the surviving brother still sits on the board there. I'm not necessarily opposed to libertarian thinking, but it has influenced very heavily, this process, and it's not been aired publicly. The title of the communication he made to you on February 8th was titled, at least in his formatting it online, it was titled "Initiating a Bold Comprehensive Plan." So he obviously had his hand in the comprehensive plan progress, as well as the zoning process. I don't really believe that if we weren't all shut down during COVID, that an airing of a libertarian zoning ordinance would have passed muster here, but everybody was really distracted by everything else. Auburn has been made the poster child of the Mercatus Institute. It's all over the internet if you look, and there's a seven-page memo to Mayor Levesque discussing everything from Roy's Hamburgers to the East Auburn Baptist Church parking lot. And I think it's time that this be brought forth, and the citizens of Auburn be asked, do you want libertarian thinking, innovative, bold, comprehensive planning? Or would you rather have a more measured, conservative approach to things like Lake Auburn and intensity of...
I apologize. I'm going to pause your time. You started quite on topic. Are you specifically discussing your opinion that this specific zone is too libertarian?
No.
I would ask you just to please try to steer back towards our discussion of this specific zone.
No, I'm pretty much finished. I believe very much in process. I agree with everything that Mr. Cleveland said about process. I was a city councilor in Freeport 100 years ago, but it was when the city turned into a commercial, established village. And the only thing that saved the community from being at each other's throats was process. And I will say, may I speak just briefly to the comprehensive planning?
If you'd like to, please try to the discussion of T42B as much as you can.
I'll wait until another time. Thank you.
I apologize. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Riley, do you see anyone walking over? Seeing none, I would accept the motion to close the public input section of the hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I'll start with some questions. I think one that was reoccurring dealt with process. Whether it was asked as a question or not, concerned about process. I think one person... I will combine a couple of questions. We heard the question, "Where did the language come from? Why didn't city staff amend the language? And why is the planning board moving so quickly on this topic?" I think those are all related.
If I could address that, I think we had a number of planning board meetings and a few council meetings that followed the comprehensive plan process after that was completed. Really, the changes tonight are coming directly from a director from the council to consider actually changing what was adopted as part of the T42 district to accomplish the 10 or 12 changes that they had attempted to accomplish in an earlier meeting. So our timeline on this T42B question has been fairly swift. I think we took more time on the T42 discussion before, but the council gave us a deadline of the 7th of July for this portion of the discussion.
So to clarify the answer, the language came directly from the city council. You didn't answer the question as to why didn't staff amend it, but my assumption is that you did not amend it because it was an order that was voted on by the city council, and you felt it was not appropriate to change the language of a city council order? Yes?
That's correct.
And that with regard to 4.2B, the reason the planning board is taking this up, although it had not planned on taking it up previously, I guess we had planned on taking it up. But the reason we're taking it up within this timeline is that the city council has set a deadline for us in order to do this.
That is correct.
And that is also why we don't have a chance to workshop this.
That's correct.
So just to kind of parlay off of that, so I heard a lot of the same sentiments, right? Like feeling like the process wasn't there, people not feeling like they were heard. And I have been a part of these meetings, and I've definitely heard a lot of comment. So I guess my question is, when we moved from the 4.2 to 4.2B, was part of that to address some of the comments that we've heard publicly, right? So I guess that's my question. So I've heard that from the public, and I'll just redirect that to staff to say, "We had certain parameters. We're amending them." Is it because of the public... Is part of it because of the public comment that we did receive and the feedback to then be able to make it a little bit more amenable?
Yeah, during the council and planning board process, there were a lot of comments made about T42, and the council attempted to sort of dial that back with a reduced version of change. What we were told was that would have to go back and start over the planning board process. The council chose not to start that process over, but then directed this to be considered after the T42 zone was put in place. So this is a dialed-back version that restricts the uses and the density to some degree, more so than the T42 does.
And I guess to add a little bit to that, as the council introduced the new language, this 4.2B language, the city manager got a legal opinion, and they said that that was enough substantial changes that we needed to go back to the planning board specifically and get the recommendation, or at least brought forward through the public process, that those changes be, you know, go through the public process, and then the planning board makes a recommendation to council, and they could move it forward at that point. So that's kind of the process that we were in and the reason why we're kind of rehashing some of the same language that we did, say, two months ago. But I think that the end state from the council and from what we heard from the public was a lot of things that made sense, that, you know, age-restricted retail was not going to be allowed. Having a, you know, having a drive-through Dunkin' Donuts at the end of a dead-end street in a residential neighborhood doesn't make sense for this type of zoning. So those are the items that I think the council was really focused on, and I think that as city staff, we certainly agreed with that and, you know, why we're here in front of you guys today talking about this to kind of give it a little bit more, you know, the basis of why we're here and why.
So can I ask a follow-on that? What is the minimum for a process to be considered a public process? What level of engagement has to happen?
That was actually going to be my question, too, is if a workshop's required at all? Because it's a step we skipped. I don't know if that was something that the lawyer said we didn't have to do. We just go right to the hearing.
When the council made the motion to recommend those, as John stated, we had the city attorney review it. He felt the changes were substantive enough that it had to go through the normal public process for an ordinance change, that it was a different process. That process includes a public reading and public hearing at the planning board for the board to then provide a recommendation. Now, you can have more, but that's the minimum for the planning board. And then at the council level, it includes two public readings, one of which must also be a properly noticed public hearing. So there's notice requirements for a public hearing at the planning board level and then at one of the council readings and public hearing. So it really takes one meeting of the planning board, a minimum of two meetings of the council. But we'll quite often also have a workshop at the council level if there's substantive difference coming from the planning board process.
So just to clarify this, so right now, we're meeting the minimum requirement of the planning board and then city council. What's typical when we do a zoning change like this?
I mean, when we went through the T42 adoption, I think we had at least two meetings of the planning board and one plus one workshop. I'd have to double-check that process. I think the more extensive a change is, then the more process we'll sometimes have. But that's at the discretion of the board if they need more time. In this case, we have a pretty specific directive on time from the council. I think it's not unusual to have an extra meeting as part of that process, whether that happens with the planning board or the council, if the change is substantive.
And so why is there a deadline from council?
The council gave us a deadline as part of their vote.
So we have a city councillor here. Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, sure. I think from my perspective at least, the reason for the deadline really was we voted to make the area of Lake Street the 4.2. We got plenty of feedback about, you know, needing some changes there. And I think we really want to enact those changes before having that zone, T42, for too long. So, you know, it makes sense to me to have this changed now rather than to wait and allow more of, any kind of building happen there that we don't want to have.
So, sorry, to keep harping on this, does it feel like August 10th is... Or if, let's see, when's our meeting? The 13th? So say the 13th or 14th, whatever. Is that too late for council? I don't... Is there a material difference between the 7th and...
If you're asking me personally, I would go for that in a heartbeat. I don't have a problem with that. But the rest of the council, I mean, I'll admit, I voted for this to have the deadline of July. I'd be okay with August, but the rest of the council did vote for July 6th. Is that what it was? 7th?
Thank you.
We can debate whether we should have a deadline. It doesn't matter. We have one. So, you know what I mean?
But I guess to add a little bit to the conversation, recognizing that there is a tight deadline. As staff, you know, there was some things that we did. We posted the notices as forward-looking as we could in terms of the website. We put these notices on the front page of the city's webpage. We've never done that in the past. We're trying to make the information more accessible. I know that there's shortcomings, and we have tight deadlines, but as staff, I can tell you that we're working on that every day, and we're thinking about ways with Rosemary and, you know, the new documents and using the GIS mapping tools that we have and using social media with Facebook and those platforms as well. I think we're going to strive to do that more. It's not necessarily part of the ordinances, but it's something that we're going to strive to do better. And we recognize that some of these deadlines are tight and that we're not going to reach 100% of the people. But I can tell you that I think about it every single day, how we're going to get the information to the city of Auburn and its residents the best way that we can. And I know that there's other ways to do it other than the public notice process and the, you know, the Sun Journal process. I know that's in the ordinance, but there's other ways that we can do that, and I think we can get better at it.
So can I ask a quick question? I just have a quick question. When was a deliverable for July given to the planning board? What was the date that the city council came forward with that? Do you guys remember?
It was in the meeting. It was actually in my notes. So that directive was on May 16th.
Okay, so May 16th for July. We can mince words. So deliverable, deadline, so May for July. Okay.
So I just want to clarify, I'm not criticizing staff at all. I think you all are doing a great job on a very tight deadline. I don't know whether this is where Mrs. LeBlanc was going, but this timeline ties our hands as a board.
So it doesn't, though. So I want to make sure that we can get to some of these topics. It's a tight timeline. If members of the planning board feel that they understand this well enough and they can make a recommendation in favor of, they should vote in favor of. If they feel that it doesn't meet specific criteria and they can't put forward a favorable recommendation, then they should vote for that. And if we feel that we haven't had enough time and enough information and we can't put forth a favorable recommendation, then you should advocate for that and make that your findings a fact. But there's literally nothing we can do about the deadline at this point, right? I understand what you're saying, and it's an important note. And it's something that we can send back through staff to the city council that these timelines are not helpful. But with regard to tonight, I think we need to be moving forward, recognizing that saying, advocating as a board member that, "I don't feel I have enough time, so I can't forward a favorable recommendation," is certainly, you know, within your purview.
So, well, yeah, but it advocates a specific up-down vote, right? Like, what happens if we table this? What's city council do if we table this?
I don't know. You know, it would probably go to the next meeting on the 27th, and you would hear it again.
Yeah, and I don't expect an answer from you because you're not city council, but that's just a question.
Look, I'm not going to put words in anyone's mouth, but understanding the city council, I'm sure that there would be several... There would be more than one city councillor who would feel that we are no longer doing our job if we did that. There would be implications. So no one knows what they would do, but...
If we feel as a board that we can't make a decision on this...
They're asking us to make a decision by a certain time. So if we can't make a decision, we tell them we can't. Our decision is that we cannot vote in favor of that within this timeline. That's it.
So can I ask a quick question?
Mr. Riley's been really... Mr. Bergeron's been really patient. I'm sorry to cut you off.
This is actually more of a procedural thing than to this particular issue because we're not having a workshop. But a lot of the public comment was that they don't feel involved, and I know we're required to send out a notification of a hearing. And I wonder if the timing of that could be sent out to let them know there's going to be a workshop in the future for things that are going to be workshop, that there's going to be a workshop and then a hearing the following month so that would allow them more meeting times to participate in the process. Because it seems like a lot of people felt like they were not being allowed to participate. That was my thought.
Oh, no, my thing was more procedural, too. Like, I thought we were addressing public comment, and then I'm like, where are we?
Yeah, I know. We sort of got away from that. So to get to that...
I also have a procedural thing, if I may. Because what we're talking about, the feedback we're getting, is people don't feel heard. And I still consider myself a rookie on the planning board, so I need some help. We have... How many times do we have an opportunity for the public to be heard outside of a public hearing? If we workshop it, do they have an opportunity to speak?
Depends on how the board or the council runs the meeting, but public comment usually would not happen at every workshop. It would be more general at the public comment part of the meeting.
I got the impression that that was not the case, that we didn't take public comment, that it was more of a discussion because we can't meet outside of a public forum. But there was a chance for us to get together and discuss a subject matter. People could attend, but they don't, and probably in part because they weren't invited to speak. But are you saying that that is part of the environment at a hearing? I mean, at a workshop?
At a workshop, it's a chance for the board to discuss it, but you also typically have public comment at the beginning or the end of the meeting, much like the council does. And we've also had some community conversations if there really just wants to be that dialogue between the board and the public.
I love the community conversations around some of the other topics that we've been discussing recently. I think it's been quite beneficial.
So, back to questions. One member of the public asked several questions. Was an environmental assessment done for the zone change? I know the answer to this, so I'm going to help this individual, this resident, out and ask a more pointed question. If not, when do environmental assessments occur for development?
So typically, environmental assessments, the true definition is, you know, like a Phase 1 environmental site assessment is really done at the land transaction. It's part of the due diligence of the land purchase, purchase-sale agreement from the buyer or the developer of the land. They want to make sure that there's no encumbrances on the property and specifically to environmental items like petroleum products or things like that that could impact the parcel when it's being developed, that specific. But in general terms, if we're talking about environmental assessments, sometimes we look at things like wetland delineations, or we look at the impacts of stormwater. Or if it's a big development over three acres, then we're under site law. So those are all specific environmental assessments that are done specifically for a development. It doesn't necessarily get done at the comprehensive plan level. It doesn't get done at a map amendment with the planning board or a text change in the ordinance.
What is the purpose of the zone change and why reduce zones? I assume the question is specific to you, why change from T4.2 to T4.2B in any... in any sections of the city? Or perhaps they meant why have a T four point two B instead of what currently exists? So, answer that as best you can and then why would we reduce the number of zones?
So, we'll start with the comp plan. The comp, the comp plan really suggests that we go from 16 or 18 zones and then kind of condense that to eight zones. And what we're really doing is that we're making it more user friendly and easier to understand in terms of people trying to do projects within the city and make it, make it easy for individual homeowners, for one, and then new businesses to be established and to developers to create new housing opportunities within the city. So that, that was the basis of the zoning, to lessen the amount of zones. And that, that was specific language that was entered into the new future land use plan and land use mapping in the comprehensive plan. And then, what was the second part of the question?
You partially answered it, but what is the purpose of changing the zone, any zone to this?
And again, I think, I think the, specifically about that, we, I think the council tried to do that and we ran, they ran into essentially a legal opinion that they really can't do that based on process and due process and how the ordinance language specifically requires us to have a public, public hearing with the planning board and then two public meetings and one public hearing with the council. And it really was, the reason for the changes was to what form-based code, the basis of form-based code and what it is. And it's really trying to form those neighborhoods the best they can under a definition of what's allowed use in that area to match what is existing.
Another question that was asked by this individual, why don't we, and I'm not sure if they meant developers of the city, use the current building stock? For instance, abandoned mills or other, other large buildings that are going used?
I think, I think that's an effort that our economic and community development team is working on. I think we're looking at infill lots across the city and vacant buildings. And, you know, that is a, certainly a thing that our economic and community development director, Jay Brenchik, works on every day in terms of bringing new ideas and new development to these, what we would consider infill areas or redevelopment areas within the city. I think that that's been something that has really come to light as planning staff and permitting staff. We're constantly working around the challenges of permitting and the challenges of zoning and how we do that and how we make those things work. If we want to apply some of that redevelopment, I think we need some more of this, what we would, from a planning and permitting standpoint, a more flexible way to do that. And I think form-based code allows us to do that and to make those things happen a little bit more easier and is more attainable in terms of, you know, the pure economics of turning an old building into a multi, you know, multi-family unit.
At the risk of being incorrect, might I add to that answer and you can tell me if I'm wrong? Fundamentally, the city doesn't fund these developments. So the city can't choose to say, we want the lounge building to be developed and compel a developer to develop it. All we can do is create incentives and hope that they will develop it.
Correct.
One of the big differences of the T four two district, and I think the same applies to T four two B, is it creates the opportunity to use underutilized space in some of the larger older buildings in a way that wasn't allowed under the urban residential standard. So in that way, it opens up the possibility of additional investment.
Why were members of the public asked to pre-register?
I've addressed, I've taken this call many times and really it's, we were just trying to get a gauge on how many people are going to attend, if the overflow room was going to be enough. Do we need to go to a Zoom type situation? We just wanted, we didn't want it to be an unsafe situation. I think that, you know, in terms of, you know, getting better every day in terms of our communication at the city level, I think it's important to note that we shouldn't be using the term required. It's, it's good to have, but I don't think we can mandate somebody to sign up to come to a public meeting. I don't think that we have the ability to do that. But again, in the, in light of safety and COVID and just with sheer numbers and dealing with people, we have capacity in the building. And if we go back to kind of our fundamental, what we do in our work is, you know, as code enforcement officers, we've got to think about life safety. And if we have too many people in the building, then we've got to, we've got to think about an alternative way to address that. And that was our intent, that was the intent of that, was to require a sign up. But it was certainly not something that we can't enforce, that we're not going to mandate and make sure someone has a ticket to come to a public meeting. And we'll do better at communicating that the next time.
Yeah, I noticed that staff does not even check if people are registered. Correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe we've ever turned anyone away from public comment in my time on the board, so long as fire code allows that number of people to be both here and in the community room. I know that for many people, I'll assume I'm speaking for everyone in this room and in the community room, this is the most exciting party that we've been to in a long time. And you guys were trying to be gracious party planners, make sure there was enough food, so. I guess, yeah, why are we having the meeting? One question that was asked was with regard to schools. I know that we've asked for input from the school department. I noticed that we didn't necessarily get specific input, but someone asked, are the schools able to handle the increase? And I'm going to add to their question, does the school, does the school department have the opportunity to comment on these sorts of things that are coming before the board? I understand the first question you probably cannot answer.
Yeah, so we worked directly with the school department in the council setting the goal of 2,500 new units in the city. We didn't get any specific feedback about this particular change, right, that's before you tonight. But we have worked with the school department to understand their capacity, especially with the new Edward Little High School. And this number of units can be absorbed into existing facilities with existing staffing. We're averaging about a third of a new student per additional household unit in Auburn over the last 10 years or so. And we've also removed a lot of units, so a lot of the schools are at a capacity that is less than their peak.
Yeah, the way I like to think of it is, you know, you think of the, you know, the typical three-decker that would be allowed in those small quarter, you know, acre lots that we're doing for infill, right? So maybe one child out of those three units you might get, you know, that's, that's kind of the math on that. So you get one child out of, out of one, one three-decker that you have, you probably drive one, one new student for the school system out of that.
Oh, another resident, and I'm going to ask this question because it's actually a question I end up running into around town all the time. It was posed by this individual as where's the development supposed to go? At the, at the risk of putting words in their mouth, I assume the question is really about why would you rezone our neighborhood for this density if there are no lots upon which to build at that density?
This is a, this was a question that we, we answered when we originally did for T dash four point two. And I think that the reality is that there isn't, there isn't a lot of opportunity, especially for these more densely populated areas that already have homes. You know, I don't think that the, the math is going to add up or the economics adds up to tearing buildings down and building something new, right? If you, if you need a row of four, five houses to put one of these, in people's mind, a new mega complex, those situations just doesn't make sense from a, from an economics and from a developer's standpoint to do that. One of these beautiful homes in these neighborhoods are, you know, nowadays is going to sell for three to, three to $500,000 or even more. We saw houses even more recently. It just doesn't make sense to tear those things down and rebuild. But it, it does lend opportunity for a lot of the non-conformants that we're talking about, where a lot of these older homes that are built, especially in the Court Street area, I know that we're kind of getting ahead of ourselves a little bit in this conversation, but a lot of those lots are non-conforming. And, you know, if, if, heaven forbid, if there was a fire and 50% of the home was damaged and they wanted to rebuild that nice front porch on some of these older structures, they might not be able to do it because they can't meet the current setback requirements of 25 feet in the urban residential zone. That was some of the, some of the biggest opportunities. And then there was those onesie twosies where something happened to a particular home. You know, maybe the house fell on bad times, the people that lived there and it, it fell away and then it got turned over and there could be opportunity for infill, for redevelopment in that, on that particular lot or there's vacant lots. And there is where the infill really occurs and I think that's where the real opportunity lies in a lot of these neighborhoods that we're talking about.
And if I could just add, I think a lot of people have brought up the either 14 or 16 units per acre and it's easier to envision that on a one acre lot. If you have a 10,000 square foot lot, which is pretty typical of a lot of these neighborhoods, it's either, let's say it's either vacant or maybe it has one or two units. Current zoning under urban residential standard would not allow for a third unit. A 14-unit per acre density would allow for three units on a 10,000 square foot lot. 3.2 units. So there's really been an attempt to try to allow on some of those pretty typical lots, one more unit than what was allowed previously as far as infill. And then the larger lots, obviously you could do the math, that could allow more units. But the vision, I think, largely of the comp plan committee, as well as the council and some of the discussions and the planning board, was these infill lots to have the ability to add an additional unit or some additional units on pretty typical lots where we have water and sewer and where we provide public services.
I've got one more question, then I'm sure I've missed some, so I'll ask other folks.
But that's really the nuts and bolts of this whole thing is right there, what you just said. It's not putting a 14-unit megaplex on a potion stamp lot. Right now we have, you know, I'm looking at our map, we have a three-unit parcel and a quarter acre. Right now, that's a 12. What is that? That's a 12, 12-unit per acre if you extend it out, right? I mean, those are, those are matching the neighborhoods right now. That's the prux to this whole conversation. It's not new developments, it's not tearing down neighborhoods to build these things because it doesn't make economic sense. It's permitting someone to infill a 10,000 square foot parcel with something that makes sense for their investment. A two-unit probably doesn't justify the investment, but a three-unit does. And that's what we're talking about.
Would it make sense to pull up a couple examples?
14 on an acre?
Yeah, that's what you said.
That is what I said, but we don't have any acre lots to develop.
What, I'm, I'm actually going to stop that back and forth because we discuss amongst the board only. I hope the point is taken that. Yeah, you can't put 14 or 16 or whatever number you want to, we want to say, okay? You can't, if you've got a half an acre lot, you could put seven. If you've got a 4.99 acre lot, you're down to six. Like it doesn't, there's no, like you can't do half units. That's the way the density works. There was a question. There was a question about the Mercatus Institute and the influence of Mr. Firth. I think it's fair to say that anytime consultancy gets involved, members of the public who do not have the same political leanings as, as, as those consultancy groups are going to disapprove of that. Intrinsic in that question about that though was really, how does a member of the public access public information? For instance, if you as a member of the public wanted to know what information was sent between the mayor and Mr. Firth, how would you, how would you go about getting that information?
Anybody of the public has the right to affoy a Freedom of Information Act. So they could essentially, they could affoy that, any information that's done in, with public communication, i.e. email and things like that, so. There is, there is that avenue to affoy information.
Excellent, thank you.
We will be creating a new alert me for planning board agendas that people can sign up. John Cleveland had mentioned that he received the planning board communications. So any email we were sending to planning board, we were also sending to people that had been asked to be included in that email. It looks like a staff person was updating those, saw names that they didn't recognize as planning board members and they didn't stay on, so we're adding those back in and we'll be creating that alert me so that we don't have to try to manage every type of email that we send out going to different groups of people, so. But it is all available on the website.
I heard one question. So somebody, can you talk about how you all think about the character of a neighborhood?
As staff, what we think about the character of a neighborhood?
When you think about whether something fits or doesn't within a neighborhood, we are asked often to consider the character of a neighborhood. We asked that in a workshop previously. And I'd love to hear how you as staff would recommend people think about the character of a neighborhood.
Yeah, I think especially as we've entered into form-based code, a lot of it is about the size and scale that's allowable. I think one of the pieces of character in a neighborhood that is, that people are struggling with, I think it's the difference in use between one and two families and multi-families, but I think that that is absolutely at the core of what our comprehensive plan goal is trying to accomplish. So if we don't, a couple of things came up as part of that, that character and, and scale. We allowed 35-foot tall buildings in the urban residential zone, but we only allowed one and two families and very few people were motivated to build a 35-foot tall one and two family because they could do it in two stories. In going through the comp plan recommendations, and we had some really detailed discussions with that comp plan committee about the goals and what's necessary for a form and character to accomplish those goals. You cannot achieve 16 units per acre with two-story buildings. We did allow 35-foot buildings, that allows for a third story. People just weren't motivated to build them with one and two family homes. So if we are to achieve the goal of allowing more people to live in Auburn, and these aren't big box stores, they're not factories, they're more people living in a neighborhood, we really need to look at allowing that third story, which was allowed before, but now it's very explicit that a third story is allowed. And people will be motivated to use third-story construction in order to hit that, that density level. We can really only get to eight or nine units per acre with two-story buildings. You can't get to 16 units or 14 units per acre on most lots with parking without having a larger footprint than what would be reasonable on a, on a smaller lot. So I think as far as character. So I think as far as character, a three-story building or three and a half story building versus a 35 foot tall building isn't all that different. I think it's the, the multi-family that sort of creates the economic incentive to actually build that 35 foot tall or three-story building. And the idea of having more renters in a neighborhood rather than homeownership, that is what I see as the, the character difference. But again, it's at the core of trying to provide equitable access to housing and opportunity for more people to live in neighborhoods that have traditionally not allowed multi-family housing.
That's great. And I wonder, so one piece that I would ask you to elaborate on, because I've heard this, this is all coming from what I heard tonight, is if nobody built that 35 foot building, then a three and a half story building, saying that remains in character because the 35 foot building is, was allowed, seems incongruous. Because if I'm, if I'm just looking around saying, I only see two-story buildings here and then this person's going to build a three-story building, that's a significant difference.
Yeah. I, you know, you've been in a lot of the neighborhoods. There are a lot of three-story buildings in certain areas and this wasn't, you know, the, the goal of the plan was to expand that more traditional character of a walkable, bikeable, closely knit neighborhood that might even support public transit at some point by having the density concentrated where we already have utilities, to allow those areas surrounding those existing historic character neighborhoods to be developed in that same character, even though we've pushed it in a more suburban direction over the last 50 years.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question about density that I think.
So at this point, before you ask that, does anyone think we left out, anyone in their notes, questions that were asked by members of the public?
Yeah. Bye.
There, there is concerns with a particular, a particular operation that seemed to be a troublesome thing, but a couple of people brought up hours of operation. That's not something that's regulated in either the T-42 or T-42B. Is that correct? Is there, is there a type of business, a regulation on which, what hours business operates?
It, it's not explicit, but I think as the board reviews a special exception, hours of operation is something that often comes up as a way to, to mold a business to meet the criteria of not impacting neighborhoods or depreciating value.
Thank you.
I think for businesses certainly, but some of, some of the group home stuff, and I think that's what we were specifically talking about in that instance, we've got to be cognizant about the American Disabilities Act and what the requirements of that is. I don't know if we can specifically dictate. Obviously they've got to provide 24 hours of service and that would be an interesting place to wade in terms of dictating, you know, when people can and, but when their shifts are.
Well, I think, I think that highlights why perhaps it's best to have those things as special exceptions instead of permitted uses because then we can handle them individually, address concerns with regard to ADA while also addressing concerns of neighbors without using an inappropriate blanket kind of zoning.
Mr. Berry, he asked, he was talking about, you know, the residential signs. So, I mean, if people have small businesses or whatever kind of business they have, like having signs out there if there was any kind of specific specifications rather, and like lighting of the signs, like.
I, I got the impression he was talking about street signs, crosswalks, no parking.
I think that one, the spot on Lake Street he was talking about was the set of no parking signs that are all lined up.
There we go.
Yeah, and more development, would that mean more streetlights, more, that's how I interpret what he was saying. But it's still worth commenting on.
Yeah, for sure.
You could certainly have a recommendation about that. I guess the home occupation uses are limited to a two square foot sign, which is one by two, not two by two, which would be four square feet, but very limited no lighting, one by two sign in those neighborhoods. Something similar could apply, you know, off of arterials or something like that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yeah, no, I apologize, just because I'm sure the, the public is going to want to know because we were talking on the side. It was a question about traffic and how to ask a specific question with regard to traffic and what, what triggers traffic controls and traffic studies. And what we were discussing was that it's an incredibly difficult question to ask staff and it's a hard question for staff to answer because there's no, there's no actual good way to ask the question and staff can't provide an answer because there's no generalized answer to that question. So I just want to say that before you speak, Mr. DuBois, because I'm sure folks will wonder what we're talking about over there. So go for it.
I'll ask a question that relates to density. We went over it many months ago. How I understood it might be different, so either I could be changing my mind or I think others could be enlightened by it. But if we could go to 133 Lake Street as an example around density, I don't know if we can call that up on the map, but this is a 2.33 acre parcel, which would suggest that that would be 32 unit development potentially, if my math is correct. But not really, if I understand it. And maybe you could walk us through some of the challenges that do nothing but reduce that figure, that number of units, the challenges that come with a parcel like that.
Yeah, we, we did discuss this particular parcel. Right off the bat, we don't have enough road frontage to, to put that many houses in there. But the, but the truth of the matter is, is that you're going to have to have accessibility and sidewalks and things like that and you're going to have to build those things. So right off the top of, of that, was it two, two acres, two and a half acres?
2.33, yep.
2.33 acres, you can do an easy multiplier of .40 and subtract just the road accesses to bring that number down.
So real quick, John, so for the public edification, when you say there's not enough road frontage, why, why do you say that? You say that because?
Because there's not enough road frontage for each of those. If you're going to develop.
And what's dictating that there's not enough road frontage?
The lot shape.
Because?
There's the road, because of the road frontage. It requires the right, the right amount of frontage.
Thank you. So there's like rules and regulations?
The width, the width of the lot at the street.
The width of the lot.
What is the regulations, basically is what I'm trying to get you to say.
So the width of the lot.
I'm leading the witness.
It would require building a road, okay? So.
And it's required because there are requirements.
Because there are requirements and the requirement is the road, is the road frontage.
It's not like you're not arbitrarily saying, I'm John and I'm saying you can't do it. There are requirements that are regulating that, right?
Yes, that's because I'm John, that's right. So you would have to build the roads, a road into this lot to make it developable. And what I'm saying from there, for, for that movement to happen and for that to occur, if you're looking at, at strictly, you know, we're, we're just cutting this up as a developer looking at land, you, you automatically subtract .4 of that. So you could multiply 2.33 times .4 and that would give you an acreage number. We'll just say for easy math, it's half. Then you got to take a look at other items that, you know, if you go over an acre of impervious area, then we've got to treat stormwater. So we're taking up land for stormwater as well there. So we've got stormwater ponds, you've got, it could be a filtered drain, it could be, it could be underneath the parking lot. But again, that, that minimizes the amount of land. Then we've got to do wetland delineation, so wetlands impacts. If you go over 4,300 square feet of wetlands, between that and 15,000 square feet, you're into wetland impacts. So you want to try to minimize those impacts in your development because it adds to costs and the return on investment. So again, all these factors really add into that. And we haven't talked about topography yet, you know, if it's over a certain percent grade, if we looked at the grades, it may not be, it may, some of that additional land may be subtracted from that. So there's, there's all, there's all these factors that are in there that, that are required and that go into the process of developing land, that land is actually extracted from that amount and so you end up with a five units per acre when you actually develop that lot. But each one is looked at individually. You've got to go through this process on every single lot that's, that's developable out there. And there's, there is a minimization on, in terms of what's available out there.
So would a developer be inclined to tear down that four unit structure on that parcel and to build, build something considerably more substantial?
You know, I can't, I can't say yes or no, but it, it, it doesn't, unless the, I don't know what the structure is, I don't know what the shape of the structure is, I don't know if it's something that, it could be done. Obviously it's, it's the condition of the existing structure and, you know, what's available. There may be some instances, if there's enough land behind you and it makes sense and it's good land, you may get a situation that they may demo that particular structure. But in most cases, it's not.
Good, flat, dry, more road frontage type parcels.
Right.
Would lend itself to that. But they're not popping up on every corner.
They're not popping up at every corner. And there's, there's a stream there, so there's more NRPA setback requirements on that particular lot. It's coming up on a, on our topo, so that means that it's coming up in a seven and a half minute series map, so there's setbacks there that, again, minimize development potential on this particular lot specifically that we're looking at.
So you need a full acre parcel to even be considered for a 14 unit building and then you're deducting from there because of other restrictions that the parcel has, impervious surfaces and so forth?
Correct. And you're also deducting because there's an open space requirement, right? So we can only develop 70% of that available land. So that's another factor. As we, as planning board and as staff, we've got to, as we look at this, in some of those smaller lots, we've got to be really careful and mindful of those other requirements that are required, you know, in terms of open space and parking requirements and, and obviously stormwater and environmental impacts.
Hey, can I ask a question? Am I looking at, my eyes are not that good. Am I looking at Linden? I'm, I'm looking at Davis then.
Davis and Gammon.
Davis. Okay, so there's a bunch of lots that are roughly the same size. Staff sees what I'm seeing on, on the northwest side of Davis. Can you tell me the acre, the, pick, pick one of the lots that looks about the same size as all the other ones? Can you tell me the acreage, like how, what's the lot depth and width?
249.
Oh, well, I just need to know, if you give me the, the length and width and then...
One of them, it's about 10,000.
A lot of them is 7,500 square feet, 10,000.
So between 75 and 10,000 square feet?
In just a random sample size?
Yeah.
Let's be generous, we'll call it nine. What's that in acres?
1,800 square feet.
Of, of the lot size?
Yeah.
I apologize, you said how much?
1,800 square feet, 15,000.
Yeah, I was going to say that's, which lot, that's a, but that's an atypical lot compared to the others, Rosemary, like choose me one that's...
They're all.
10.
That's a double lot they clicked on. 75.
There are some, there are some good examples on Fern Street, if you wanted to see.
That one's 10,000?
10,000.
Okay.
How many units on that one? Was there a land use code of one or two?
Two.
So that one is already a duplex, so that one actually is at the max for a 7,500 square foot lot.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying. So right there, that one that you just clicked on has got a duplex on it, right? So what's the density of that lot?
10,000 square feet.
Yeah.
Eight.
Eight units per acre.
So that duplex on that one lot is at eight units per acre in density. So if you had a duplex next to it, the same sized lot, you've already hit 16.
16 for a half an acre, or less than a half.
Or a less than a half an acre. I just want people in the audience to see what, what eight and 16 looks like. It's, 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 I'd be, I'd be willing to bet that if you, if we took enough lots that it was an acre there, that's probably...
Twice as much.
Yeah, I, I'd say that you, you're probably up to 12 units per acre on that, on that, right there. Right? So that people can visualize what that looks like.
No, you'd have...
Three, 3.2 units on a 10,000 square foot lot is at 14 units per acre.
Okay.
So, which you round down to an even three units.
Mm-hmm.
That's just under an acre.
So there's four? Yeah? Okay, so that, so that's four units per acre, right?
Yeah, but there's two units in there.
Those are two units though?
There are some.
Okay, all right. All right, so some of these questions have been moving to deliberations, so in an effort to make sure that we are trying to, we have already gone way off the, the schedule in terms of getting stuff done tonight, but I would like to hear, I would like to hear plenty boards' discussion so that we can move towards a decision.
Can I ask for one more clarification?
Yeah.
The parking requirements are going to be, are the same for a T-42 as they are for a T-42B? And that there's still going to be required, one dwelling, one space per dwelling unit?
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
When, sorry, when I go to like these apartment complexes, there's actually like a lot of extra parking, like for other people that have second cars, like is there any kind of like, is that allotted in those, I mean, because you can't just have?
Yeah, so if there's over, I believe it's four units, for every four units, there has to be one additional parking spot into the, into the calculation.
Okay.
Okay, so I will, I will start this discussion by saying the following. We discussed T-42 over several meetings. T-42B to me does not represent a fundamentally new topic. And that doesn't mean that it doesn't for other people, okay? I'm just saying for me, I see it as a, I see it as council came to us with a change that they would like to see to that zone. But instead of changing the entirety of T-42, they're saying we would like to change T-42, but in doing so, we would like there to be an extra zone, T-42B, which is essentially an amended T-42. the last time we talked about this, I personally felt that T-42 did. It met the goals that the, the city council set forth. It, um, it, it was in compliance with the comprehensive plan. I don't see taking out some of those higher-intensity uses making it less in compliance with the, the comprehensive plan. So, the discussion that needs to be had is really, um, do you think this complies with the comprehensive plan? And it's reasonable, as we heard earlier, to say that you feel you don't have enough information. That's, that's always something you could say. But, um, I think that's, that's really where we gotta, it doesn't just have to be around the comprehensive plan, but there, there needs to be a discussion about, um, not just what you think about the, the zone, but does it do what city council is hoping it's gonna do? And does it conform to the regulations that we say we want to be in place in the future, i.e. those things in the comprehensive plan? So...
I apologize, this is not exactly what you wanted, I, I just wanted one more clarification. The, in the red line packet we got, the parking requirements changed, it was 1,000 feet for the T-42 that we saw, that we passed, and the red line, this thing says parking requirements in T-41, 2, and 2B would all be changed to 500 feet. That, so that would be, would that be changing T-41 and T-42 as well? Is that something that we're doing tonight, or is that just, I, I, I don't, I'm not sure why they're highlighted in inclusion with this 500-foot change?
That's how I read it.
Yes, so those would be considered part of the change.
Thanks.
So I guess, I, speaking to your question, Mr. Seer, I'm kinda where you are in terms of the differences between 4.2B and 4.2. It really only excludes, um, two things compared to 4.2, the rest, some things turn to special exception, et cetera. And it permits government offices. So, one thing, so before I even think about that difference, I would like to, it, should we pass this, I would not want to leave just a blank gap where it refers to artist studios, performing arts centers, et cetera. I think we have to make a call on that, or else we enter into serious limbo in terms of future hearings, so... I would say, given that 4.2, that's a special exception, that I would recommend that 4.2, I mean, 4.2B, should we adopt it, should also consider that a special exception.
I do have another question for staff. Density was not previously described. We heard about LD 2003. It does get thrown around a lot. It has some serious implications. It does have a multiplier in it. The multiplier is not for every multifamily dwelling. Which developments is that multiplier specific to?
It's for low, low to moderate income housing, it's for housing. Low to moderate income housing, lytec type of housing. The, um, and the other, you know, we, we bounce, we bounce around, uh, the 14 units per acre, um, and, but in form-based code, it's really, it, it's kinda hard to apply that in a lot of situations, it's, it's really the form of the lot and what, what the surrounding area will allow it. We talked a little bit about that in that particular lot, the example at 2.33-acre lot. So it's the form of the lot, it's the shape of the lot, it's the surrounding communities in developments that's around there that will drive a lot of the, the densities. We, we do have to be mindful of parking and open space and things like that, um, in new roads, in those developments. And that, that will drive, I think, oftentimes the densities down further than what we, we imagine.
So, can I, just to follow, a basic follow-up question then, with form-based code, since density isn't specified, although here it would be, but assuming that's not in there, how does LD 2003 actually impact a form-based code?
I, I don't believe it does, honestly. I don't see how it can, uh, uh, 'cause we're, we're already at max density of what the land will allow it. And I don't think that the state, and again, I, you, we may, we may have to seek legal opinion on this, but LD 2003 certainly doesn't address height of, height, you know, it doesn't, the restrictions of the height of the building is what's gonna drive that, to get that to a number that's double. And I don't think that the LD 2003 allows that, but again, we may have to seek a legal opinion on that, so... But the way that I read it, it certainly doesn't allow it, I don't think that's the intent.
We've had some, some discussions with the state and will certainly be involved with rulemaking, but I think if you were regulating density by form and not putting a number as an, sort of an artificial cap, then you avoid, yeah, you're making housing available, available by allowing for flexibility of housing, but you avoid the multiplier for income-restricted housing as compared to non-income-restricted housing, so...
So does that argue for striking item five?
What's up?
Does that argue for striking item five on that, on the notes?
We had suggested in the T-42 version not creating an artificial cap for density, and that, that is one of the re, that is one of the, the impacts of that that has been discussed. We're still waiting for rulemaking, but I think it...
As I understand, the 14 came from council?
Correct.
Was that, yeah?
Yeah. It, it, honestly, it doesn't apply, and I think that as, as we go through the rulemaking, it's pretty clear in the, in the rulemaking process that everything goes back to DECD and ACF and their groups, and we're working closely with them right now. And then for them to understand what form-based code and how it's applied in these areas, I think we can, I think, I think we can get the state to throttle back on that and get a clear definition of that. I think there's room there for opportunity for us to be at the table in that conversation.
Further comments? Then I'd be seeking a motion, however, before someone makes a motion, I would enter, um, we, we've discussed dwelling units. We've discussed whether or not artist studios, performing arts centers should be special exceptions or not. There was a suggestion that government buildings be allowed, offered in all zones, but that didn't seem to fly so much. We have not discussed, um, adult use, whether we wanna treat marijuana differently in the zone from other adult-use retail. There was a discussion earlier about, um, retail and that retail requiring an, an upper-floor residential unit. And the concept of setbacks, so I have some things I wanna say about that before we go, but, does anyone wanna add to any of that stuff, discussion of that?
When we were just, when we were talking about the age restrictive retail, with the possibility of, say Heath, you said Heathco's, if they decided to get a, a permit to be able to sell, wouldn't that be the, at the, the point to, to restrictives when they go for the permit and say that it's in this zone, or, I, I guess I'm not familiar with the permitting process, 'cause, like a Rupert's would be an example of something that's while age restrictive, but Heathco's would still sell alcohol.
Yeah, I think the intent was with age-restricted retail not being allowed or being a special exception was to allow, was to require a higher level of review of that or not allow it at all. I, I haven't seen any marijuana-licensed operations that marijuana is sort of a minority of their business, but I guess as Matthew Duval had raised, it, it is a possibility, so it could be more explicit, explicit about no marijuana establishments, period.
Well, right now, it's, right now, it's totally restricted, right?
And to, for, for someone to, so my question was that for them, for say, in the example Heathco's were to apply for a permit to do it, the permitting process, what's involved with that? Is it something that says you're in this zone, or is it something that says legally you have training to ID, you know, minors or?
In a, um, age-restricted retail is a retail operation that's primarily engaged in the sale of age-restricted products. So I do think there's a little bit of a loophole there, if you were, your Heathco's, you're selling $50,000 worth of pizzas and hamburgers and sodas, and you're selling $5,000 worth of marijuana, I think there's room that somebody could argue that that is not an age-restricted retail operation by definition. So if you wanna be more specific to absolutely rule that out, I think there's room to do that.
Note three actually specifies floor space, not sales. Right?
Right, so 50% of floor space, I mean...
Like, so you could have a corner and it could make up most of your sales and it would be...
But there are other requirements, right? I mean, you can't be within a certain distance of, of a school.
That's true, for licensing as well.
There are other restrictions, um, I don't know.
2,000 feet from another marijuana business, um, 750 from a school.
Okay, so, people need to keep that in mind. With regard to, um, w, w, we talked about retail and residence, um, I'll add my two cents, I don't understand why the residence has to be above, but I think the residence most definitely must be attached. I think it would be fine if you have a small storefront in the front of your home, or at the rear of your home, or you live on a lot where you've gotta walk out, like for instance, I mentioned Grabbles, where your residence is below and the, the business is above, but...
Detached garage?
What I was hearing, no, because it's not attached.
It's not what?
It's not attached, right? See, what I was hearing from, uh, uh, Council of Staples was that the intent was really to make sure that you weren't creating standalone retail, that it was tied specifically to being attached to residences in an effort to encourage owner-occupied sort of, uh, businesses. So, um, I will say with regard to that topic, my preference would be, instead of saying above, it would need, if this were to move forward, I think it would be attached.
Yeah, I'm in agreement, I feel like that's like super restrictive and handicapping, that you're just saying upper-floor residential, then limits, extremely limiting in my opinion.
Uh, and there was a concern about setbacks. When we look at these neighborhoods, the, one of the primary reasons for rezoning in a neighborhood where we know that the density is already there, or the lots are not there to develop, uh, one of the other things that we're trying to accomplish is to remove non-conformance. But we know that there are homes that were built under the current zoning, um, and depending on the neighborhood that you're in, there are more or less of them. I just moved to Granite Street and took a walk around the neighborhood and I could tell you the majority of the houses, uh, on, on my street and adjacent streets were clearly built before the urban resident zoning was put in place, because most of us would be non-conforming. However, there are homes that were built after, uh, the current setbacks are five minimum and 15 max, uh, under T-42B as proposed. And I would like to sort of honor the idea that, I'm not trying to make anyone a house, I'm excited that my house is currently conforming, because T-42 is in place. As a homeowner, I, I see that as a benefit. But that doesn't, I don't wanna make my neighbor non-conforming now, just because their house was built under the urban resident zoning. I, I would like to see, sure, front setbacks, five-foot minimum, um, to a maximum of 25-foot or 25%, whichever is more. And so people know where I pulled that number from, I pulled that from the, the setback required in the urban resident zone, in the suburban resident zone, um, and in the low-density rural residential zone. 25-foot is a setback. So I would like to make sure that, instead of putting it at 15, if we were to move forward, I would wanna see us, see that maximum setback needs to be pushed back further, that way we're not creating non-conformance in those homes that were built under the, say, the urban residential, suburban residential zones that we're, that, that we'd be looking at.
I think, I think that makes a lot of sense, 'cause this is one of the primary goals of the, of the zone changes, to get all those buildings in the, in formance, so it would be backwards to, you're taking houses back out of that.
The other thing we could do to make sure no one is non-conforming is that we could also say, there's a five-foot minimum, um, there's, there is no maximum as well, um, which would sort of be odd for moving forward, but...
I, I remember some of the intent when we talked about the congruency of a neighborhood is to kinda keep a lot of the, uh, I think we talked about it when we, a couple years ago, when we were talking about the walkability of neighborhoods, that it's, uh, when houses are more lined up along a street instead of one up front and one way back. But like you said, a lot, it's not, it's not really the case currently, and it wouldn't become the case, so I don't think it would be a big problem to not have a setback, or a maximum setback. 'Cause if, if you're going to start building a neighborhood, it'd probably be a better idea to have a maximum setback, but if, with the, how many lots are already built on, I don't see that, that would be an incongruent approach.
You look like you have an opinion on that, John.
Yeah. I, I prefer the five, I prefer the five to 25 feet, if we say no, uh, there's no, zero sub, you know, if we go back to as far back as you wanna go, we're really gonna have, we're gonna be some, pushing some of these vacant lots where the house is way back, and it's very different than what the, what the existing neighborhood could be. We could have these onesies, twosies that are very odd.
I get you, point taken, yeah.
And if we're, if we're really focusing on form base, I think that Riley hit the nail on the head, that this really hits the form. And we're addressing as many of the issues that we can in the zone, I think that, I think you guys' intent from the beginning was spot on.
Okay. Anyone else have anything they wanna add to this discussion?
Yeah, I agree with, um, the upper-floor issue. I, I would debate the idea of needing to be attached. We saw in other examples, like a additional dwelling unit, people make, you know, these crazy contraptions to connect, uh, buildings with a, some kind of breezeway and whatever else. It's, it's a workaround, when really what we're looking for them to do is to live on property and have a business. I think if they're stewards of the property, whether the, the office is attached to the property or not, to me, it's irrelevant, because they're there, they're, they're stewards. And I think that's the intent of what we're trying to accomplish.
At this time, I, I'm, I'm gonna wanna motion with regard to how a member feels we should act. Keep in mind, the person that makes the motion gets to make the motion, so if you feel strongly, here's your chance.
I'm guessing people's hesitancy is the fact that it's a mouthful? Who do you wanna tackle it?
We're looking at you, kid.
I'll, I'll tackle it with inviting some help, but I make a motion to recommend to city council, a text amendment suggested by council with creation of a new form-based code zone, T-42B, with items listed under section two of your summary. of your summary, with a couple of revisions. One is under Number 9, to remove the word "upper floor", and just say, "must include residential unit". And I think there was another one that I'm, oh, I guess I'm...
Would you like some help?
Yes.
I would suggest adding a Number 12, "Artist Studios Performing Arts Centers" and special, be considered a special exception.
Great.
You would accept that?
Yes. And I'm indifferent to the government offices.
Last motion, is there a second?
Second.
I make a motion to amend to include that we change the setbacks from a minimum of five to a maximum of 15, to a minimum of five, to a maximum of 25-foot or 25%, whichever is more of the lot.
Can you say that again?
That we amend the front setbacks from a five-foot minimum to a 15-foot maximum. We amend that to a five-foot minimum to a 25-foot maximum, or 25% of the depth of the lot, whichever is more.
A second there.
Oh, I'm not done. I apologize. No, you know what? I'll leave it at that, because it'll be easier to do it one at a time. So, there's a motion to amend. Any discussion? All those in favor? The main motion is now amended to include the amended setbacks. I'm going to make an emotion to amend to remove Note Number 5 on Page 19 of 22, which reads, "A density of 14 dwelling units per net acre unless special exception subject to planning board approval."
I'll second that.
Discussion of the amendment? All those in favor?
Yeah, can you elaborate on that?
I am removing density. I'm removing the 14 units per acre density from the form-based code. The implication being that the lot, the size of the lot will determine the density. And that a development cannot exceed the, cannot be in non-conformance with the comprehensive plan, which has a maximum density of 16.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Amendment passes. One in opposition. Are there any other amendments that people wish to make? So there's a main motion on the floor. Does anyone need a refresher on the main motion? No discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, passes unanimously that we recommend a new zone. Now, we are going to move on to our next agenda item, which I'm assuming is why people are really here. It doesn't matter if the city has a zone that you don't particularly like, as long as they don't utilize it. And now we'll be discussing the actual utilization of the, of the zone. So, this public hearing will run the same as the last. It is a zoning amendment to Court Street, City Core, currently zoned T42 area, to a potential new district of T42. B per council directive. That includes nearly 1,687.41 acres from traditional neighborhood development district areas to traditional neighborhood development district T42B. So they're going from T421, I mean, T42 to T42B. Staff, ready for their report?
I'm going to summarize. I think you did a good job. Again, we're looking at that 1,687 acres of what's considered the Court Street area that is under the form-based code, currently T-4.2. We're looking to implement the new approved T-4.2B to this area. And I'm just going to go to the suggested findings and reasons found in your planning board packet, and, and kind of, a lot of this, a lot of these items we already discussed today, but the 2010, and now the 2020 comprehensive plan recommends expanding the form-based zone. This was accomplished with the creation of the new 4.2, and then now utilizing the 4.2B that conforms and expands to the, what's existing, what we consider more of the existing development patterns. The distinctions between the allowed uses, the density, development patterns, and the existing 4.2 areas, basically, again, as was described, was significant enough to warrant the new zone district that becomes now T4.2B. So this, essentially implementing this, addresses a lot of the concerns of folks for this zone. The area is considered the core of the city, and, you know, specifically, some of the items that we looked at for the core of the city, Eric already, we already touched on this quite a bit today, is, you know, existing utilities available, existing roadways. We're really looking at, where do we get the most bang for our buck in terms of what's considered infill development and development potential? You know, the proposal really can be implemented without detriment to city resources, in addition to sewer and water, power, high-speed internet, gas. Those, all those utilities are available in this location. And then, the next reason is to assure that the city zoning and land use regulations allow for private investments to improve property in these neighborhoods. We talked about the onesies, twosies already, that, you know, that there may be opportunity for reinvestment in some of these neighborhoods. And this really allows it to happen and allow the, you know, the creativity to occur for these, these new developments. And I think that, as we massage the 4.2B, I think the creativity for the setbacks allows for a lot of, you know, addressing non-conformance issue to being conformance. There is, there is a drive to maintain increased the city population. I think if we look back the last 20 years, our city's population has been very stagnant. We haven't had a lot of growth in the city of Auburn. I think our numbers are actually downward, trending a little bit low. If we looked at a graph, and maybe even, maybe in the last year or two, we've had a little uptick, but for the most part, for the last 20 years, we haven't had a lot of growth. And part of that population is that it's getting older. And this isn't necessarily just for the city of Auburn, but it's, but from the state, it's, state as a whole, our population is one of the oldest in the country. And we want to find ways to keep young people like Catherine here in the city, working, finding a place to live, and, you know, making a living in this community. And I think this is an avenue to do that. We talk about, in the comprehensive plan, and this planning board discussed at length about this city, and how the city core is really where the development should be. And we've got an agricultural zone that's highly coveted and protected, and we've got some pretty important resources in the north end of the city with our public water supply for the communities. And I look at this development potential as a way to protect those areas, right? So, less pressure up there. Let's put, let's put the houses where we've got the public infrastructure already. So these are some of the items that I, that I think about as a planner that make sense. Again, we've addressed a lot of the non-conformance with the side setbacks and the 25-foot setbacks. Most of the buildings in this district is currently non-conforming, right? We've used, we've showed you those examples before.
No, most of the buildings in this neighborhood are actually conforming now, because it is T4.
That's correct. That's correct.
So, let me, let me ask the question that we're all going to ask, so we could just like go to the chase. Why should we change this to T4.2B instead of leaving it T4.2, which is what it is now?
Exactly. Thank you. That was my thoughts, too.
I apologize, but...
It's really addressing some of the uses that we don't really necessarily want in these neighborhoods. I think that's the, I think that's the gist of it. The age-restricted retail, the types of businesses, the size of businesses. We don't want the Dunkin' Donuts in these neighborhoods. We don't want drive-throughs. These are the main reasons why the consideration should be high.
So, just to be clear, it just amounts to a few small changes in uses?
Correct.
And setback now?
Right, the setback. That's the...
Are there any questions from the board for staff? On this one? Okay, so you're done. I'm going to seek a motion. Do you mind if we?
Go ahead.
I apologize.
That's fine.
I feel like you were speaking more to some of the other zone changes that we'll be looking at after. A motion to open the public comments section of the hearing?
So moves.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? We'll now hold the public input section of the hearing. We're going to utilize the same rules that we used earlier. Five minutes. We'll ask that you only speak once, and we'll ask that you please speak specifically to this topic, that is changing from T421 to T42B within...
Is it for Court Street, right?
Right.
Okay.
Right, and it's T42 to T42B?
Yes, I apologize. Did I?
You said T421, which doesn't exist.
No, it does not. And again, please start by stating your name and address.
My name is Jeffrey Harmon, and I live at 34 Vista Drive in Auburn. I have some comments relative to the process, and again, relative to public input. So I'm really confused about why this item is even on the agenda. Because you're asking for public input about the application of T4.2B zoning that you've just passed to make a recommendation to the city council, which doesn't actually exist. So I don't know how you expect to get meaningful public input, because it's presumptuous for you to sit here and say, "I know that this is what the city council is going to pass, thus, let's take public input about applying this to a zone." It makes no sense whatsoever. I would also point out that applying, I think the chairman was correct. You can pass any zone that you like, but the rubber meets the road when you decide you're going to apply this to a particular district, like this Court Street district. And I would point out that you're, keep referencing that you're aligning this with a comprehensive plan. The operative comprehensive plan for the city today is 2010 unamended. The city council has passed amendments to that, but state law requires a consistency review by a state agency. That public comment period just closed, and that state agency has advised that they will be probably at least two months before they complete that consistency review. So, it's presumptuous for you to sit here and say, "You know what that state agency is going to do." So my point is, I don't know as a citizen how I'm supposed to give any meaningful input about the application of a particular zoning regulation to this zone, but I don't know what it is. Because as the chairman pointed out at the beginning of the evening, the prior agenda item is nothing more than an advisory opinion of the council. It doesn't establish this zone. The second thing I would point out is, again, these are very, very substantial changes that for this zone and the next item you're going to talk about, are going to affect thousands of people. There was a discussion, and I agree with what Eric said earlier about the workshop, except in, I've been to every one of your workshops and planning board meetings for some months here, and never once has this board allowed public comment or engaged the public during a work session. Now, Chairman Seer is probably the only person, I think, on this board that remembers back when the city took up the issue of what they wanted to see for development on Minut Avenue. There were many workshops where the planning board directly engaged in a conversation with the citizens, and that process took over a year. So, I don't know how to have that input today as I stand here, but I think you need to think about a better process, and not just meeting the legal minimums, which vastly restricts the input that you're going to get from the public. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I apologize. I did not do this during the last hearing. We generally discourage noise from the audience for any reason, and it is not because we are trying to discourage clapping, but it's because we're trying to discourage noise in general. And I apologize for not having said that. I didn't mention it during the last one, because I didn't mention it at the beginning, but we generally discourage that. Thank you.
My name is Stephen Beal. I'm a single-family resident at 93A Shepley Street, and I'm concerned about the mechanics and the process of this zoning amendment. This is proposing to amend the T4 existing zone, which zone has been in effect for only a couple of months. And it is, there is a substantial amount of the language in the existing zone, the T4 language, which carries over to the T4B2 zone. Even though there have been some distinctions and some amendments suggested here this evening, a great deal of that, the body of that language is the same. It is no secret, it's well-known to the public, and it's been in the newspapers, that there is presently underway a petition drive to repeal the existing zone as applied to this area. The T4 zone was not new a couple of months ago, but its application to this area of our city was new as of two months ago. That petition drive is currently underway. I hasten to add that I'm not a member of that petition committee, I'm not a circulator, and I'm not a part of that group. But the petition effort is ongoing. No one knows what's going to happen with that. If there are enough valid signatures on the petition, the matter has to come back to the city council, which can either repeal that existing ordinance, or it can put the matter out...
So, can I ask you to, can I ask you to tie your comments specifically back to, I will pause time, that way I'm not taking away your time. Specifically back to our discussion of changing from T42 to T42B, and why you believe that's pertinent?
Court Street, right? We're talking about Court Street?
Yes. The relevance is that it is extremely uncertain, at least to my way of thinking, as to what the effect of that petition effort will have on a vote to repeal 24B, as it is now embodied in a new iteration in 24B2. I think there needs to be some legal analysis of that offered through the corporation council, and a legal opinion rendered. And I don't think that this body ought to proceed further until you get that reading from the city attorney as to the relevance and the applicability of that petition drive and its possible future effects on both of the present ordinance, as it governs this area of the city at present, and in the new iteration, the 2, T4B2 iteration. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak about this topic?
My name's Ryan Smith. I live in...
Something else I want to kind of discuss is, earlier today you guys made amendments to T4, T-point, what, 4.2B, right? I do think it's a little premature to even discuss this tonight, because we don't know which one of those amendments are going to pass. So I don't even know how we can even discuss applying this to a zone when we don't even know, it doesn't even exist yet. I think it's a little premature, because we don't know, city council, what they're going to pass, what they're going to amend, not amend, what they're going to accept any of your recommendations, so I don't see how it's fair to any of us to be able to give you input, or for you to even apply this when you don't even know what's in it. Because we still don't have a 4.2B as of today, and we won't for a little bit while now, a while longer. So, I also want to just mention that this is why we say we don't like the process, right here. I mean, what I'm discussing now. The process you're undertaking is what we feel like has been rushed, this is what we're talking about, right here. You're rushing this. And, when we say we feel like we're not heard, and when we say we feel like you're rushing things, this is it. I mean, right here, you're, you're already trying to apply a zone that doesn't even exist. So I don't understand how we can sit here and say that the community's concerns about lack of public input, or, you know, just not having enough discussions are invalid when you're, when you're trying to do that right now. That's my biggest concern, is just the fact that we don't even know what's in this, and you're trying to pass it anyways. So I would just encourage you guys to take a step back to table this, see what city council says about your amendments, and then once we have a clear picture of allowed uses, density, whatever else, to come back, and then that will allow us to get better input, and then for everyone here to get better consideration to the zone. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this specific topic?
Mr. Chairman, my name is John Cleveland, I live, still live at 183 Davis Avenue, but I'm not sure if my wife has locked the door yet or not. I'd like to make comments about what the rationale is for changes for this district at this time, in this moment, when this zone of 4.2B did not exist till a few minutes ago. And actually doesn't exist, you just made a recommendation for it. And now you want to apply it. So, let me go back a little bit and take, and discuss how we got where we are here.
So, I'm going to pause your time, Mr. Cleveland. I suspect that you are going to, but, it, how do I want to say this?
I haven't said anything yet. Is there something I'm going to say that concerns you?
No. I want to make sure that you are talking to the correct body. So, please stay on topic with regard to what our metrics are for deciding whether or not we should change from 4.2 to 4.2B, rather than what the city council's metrics might be.
On Court Street. Just keeping that front and center.
Right, in this, in this specific topic.
So, I was just going to talk about what the planning board did.
Yeah, I apologize, yep. I paused your time, you get your full time.
Thank you. I was at the meeting on about March 8th, when you had a discussion about applying this to the Court Street area, which 4.2 at the time. You had some discussion about it, there was a motion made, and then there was amendments made that provided some of the kinds of changes that you saw here, but not all of them. That amendment passed 43. Then within minutes, there was a second, there was an amendment to the amendment, which was actually inappropriate for what it was, and that amendment...
So, again, Mr. Cleveland, I am, I do not want to be rude, how is that pertinent to this discussion? I understand that you take issue with that process, but can you please try to stay focused on this discussion tonight?
I am focused on it, and it is relevant, because it's a process on which you just got these recommendations. These didn't come out of thin ear, thin air. It was a process by which you got them, okay? So, at the time, your recommendation was 4.2. That went to the city council, and on March of, before March of 21st, there was a meeting that was attended by two city councillors and the mayor. I was invited to that meeting, to talk about specifically these kinds of amendments that we were talking about here tonight. That's relevant, because that's where you got these from. And, I did not attend that meeting, because it was a private meeting that was not public. I wasn't representing any particular individual, and I think it was inappropriate to have a private meeting. That meeting resulted, in a sense, a series of recommended amendments that were added to your recommendation. Those recommendations had to be removed, because they didn't follow the correct process of state law and your own ordinances and policies that requires this body to make land use regulations, not the city council. They took those amendments off, which you spoke about earlier, and those are the basis on which this 4.2 was developed, at the direction of the city council. This was not initiated by you, this was not initiated by any citizens' group that there ought to be a change. This comes from the city council, from this private meeting of three individuals who came up with these, put them on, had to strip them off, because I brought to their attention that what they were doing was illegal, and now that's what you're discussing. Now you want to implement those here, without, once again, hardly any public participation in doing it, to go forward. And the question is, why do we have to do this now? You just changed the zone two months ago. There's been community discussion about this. Community is clear they want to have input into this process, and they're having little effort or little time to have any input on whether these kinds of changes are consistent with what the residents of that area would see as adequate. I would suggest to you they don't. And I think that they're going to state that pretty clearly to you soon. So, I would suggest to you, there isn't a rush to do this, that you ought to allow this public process that we're asking about, a conversation, an inclusiveness, an input, rather than create a new zone and, within a short period of time, in the same night, you're going to apply it. To me, that is not building conversation, trust, and understanding in the community, and it's just...
I apologize, I've been giving people one minute, I overstepped it, you've got about 30 seconds. I apologize for not giving you the one-minute mark.
Okay. So I was going to wrap up. So, I would hope that you would give some serious consideration to simply allow the citizens of this city to have an adequate input into this process before you vote on it once again.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this topic? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion to close the public input section of the hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any in opposition? None. Staff, why are we doing this tonight?
It's the same answer from the last one. It's the same answer from the last one, the council, it's part of the directive, it was in the, it was in the directive that we, we moved this forward.
It was in the directive that we reviewed this specific zone? Okay. So not just T42B, but that, this specific area, correct?
Correct.
What if we had decided not to pass T42B, how would this item show up on the agenda?
So, that's why it's, it was a two-part process, we started that conversation off very specifically that it's a two-part process. If you hadn't moved it forward, then there wouldn't be a need to discuss the T-point, the Court Street area. But I think we'd still be, because of our workshop that we had on the four additional areas that we would discuss tonight, I don't think, obviously with time, I don't know if we'll get there, but that would have still moved, could have moved forward in discussion.
So, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this item until, to the first regular meeting of the planning board, after the city council finishes its deliberation and makes its decision on adoption of T4.2B.
I would second that motion.
Why?
Because we don't actually know the form that this is going to take in the end. Because we made some changes to what city council has proposed, and...
Would you be in favor of it if they implemented T42B specifically as we recommended?
I think it's a process thing, I mean, you know, yes, I think it's actually a pretty minor change, but for me, it's a process thing, that basically says, you know, we actually don't know what has been adopted yet, and trying to make a decision on that basis just seems to me to be out of order, frankly.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Matt as well, only because the amendments that we, we changed, or we made recommendations to the 4.2B, which are not now embedded in this specific Court Street item that we're discussing now. So now we're discussing two different things. We've got the 4.2B with amendments that we've brought back to the city council, which are not currently in this packet here that we're talking about now. So now we're talking about something different.
And I'll just be clear, this is a motion to postpone, it's not a motion to table or a motion to deny.
I guess I'm thinking about the directive from the city council, and that they want an answer by a specific date.
Surely, the city council can understand the planning board's predicament here.
Don't we have a meeting next week?
They will have not met by then, though.
Yeah, they, they would not be in effect by then.
The, I understand the process argument. I guess I kind of think of it like, alright, I'm going to enter into a deal with someone, and they say, "Listen, I got to know by 12 o'clock." And I go, "Well, if I have the answer, I have the answer, sure, we'll make the deal, but if I don't have the answer, no, I don't make the deal." I kind of feel, because they want to know by July 7th, if people feel that they, that this process has provided too much ambiguity, then the answer is just to say, "Well, if you want our answer by July 7th, our answer up to July 7th is no, because in order to give you anything else, we would need to, we would need to have more information, you'd need a better process."
I think that the, a good amount of the zoning changes are good things, so I would want it to, I wouldn't want to say no, I would want it to go through, but I would want to know that what exactly I was voting on, and not, because if I, if we recommend a favorable recommendation to council and they change it, then we've put a favorable recommendation on something that's not what we have in front of us. I guess that falls back into procedural category, but it doesn't, it doesn't seem to vote on something that we don't know that actual specifics of would actually even be that helpful to the council.
Yeah, I guess there's two different ways of thinking about it. Instead of saying, "I'd like to postpone it," I, my preference would be to say, "You're asking me to vote on something, so my answer is no." You're asking me to vote on something that I don't have the specifics to.
I mean, well, so there's a, there's a motion right now, we can vote on it, and then we can take up another motion afterward if it fails.
So, all those, and is there any more discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
The common feedback we're getting is around process and around community input. Wondering if I can amend the motion to include, not a workshop, but a, maybe the other term that we've done for things around the watershed and the...
Like a community conversation?
Community conversation. Is that possible in our timeline to offer a forum for communities' input?
We certainly could, I don't know exactly what the timeline is, if you're waiting for the council to make a final second reading, public hearing, the soonest would be July So, it's probably possible in that timeframe, although it's tight, because we have back-to-back Tuesday night this week, planning board, Monday, Tuesday, council next week, only two weeks until the next planning board meeting, and then, you know, so that, there's just a lot of meetings in a month that a lot of people traditionally take a week off. I think we could have it around that time, and we'd have to figure out who you want to be there. Is that a planning board meeting, or is that just staff hosting a public meeting with the public, where the public is welcome, and it's videotaped, and you can see it, but not a regularly scheduled planning board?
So, point of order, Mr. Chair, just about Robert's rules, do you know, is there a motion, a way to retract the motion, the motion that's been seconded, or does it have to be voted on?
Let me, of course you're asking for it, I had it out at the beginning of the meeting, I don't know where I put it now.
You don't have mine in front of me?
Got the rules of order somewhere. Let's see.
Mr. Chair, can I ask the staff a question while you look that up, or?
Yes.
What are the ramifications, if, is there any downside to postponing that we might, may not be aware of?
Postponing a decision tonight?
Yes.
I think it just, it just doesn't meet the council directive, I think the council would have to figure out how to, how to react to that. If you vote that you don't believe it should pass in that timeline, unless there's more process, that, but you're actually voting this as a negative recommendation, unless there's that additional meeting, then I think it gives the council the option of either moving forward with a negative recommendation, or, or setting up that other meeting. So, and I guess in a sense, a tabling motion probably does more to delay it, that potentially, if the council chose to do something, but I think you've made it clear that you think there should be more process, and you can with your motion, and we can talk to them about how to, how to work that into the schedule.
Would the council be required to wait for a recommendation from the planning board, or could they act with or without a recommendation?
They, they don't have to wait forever, I'd have to double-check how long it's been since they asked for it, and how much time, time they have.
Yeah, that's another thing, like, they, they have a, if we don't act within a certain period of time also, it's just assumed that we were in favor of it. So it's the same way with developments as well, and site plans, if we don't act with it, on it within a certain period of time, there, that site plan is considered to be...
We're not that close to that period of time, though, are we? about how to, how to work that into the schedule.
Would the council be required to wait for a recommendation from planning board, or could they act with or without a recommendation?
They, they don't have to wait forever. I'd have to double-check how long it's been since they asked for it, and how much time, time they have.
Yeah, that's another thing, like, they, they have a, if we don't act within a certain period of time, also, it's just assumed that we were in favor of it. So it's the same way with developments as well, and site plans, if we don't act with it, on it within a certain period of time, there, that site plan is considered to be...
We're not that close to that period of time, though, are we? I mean, we just...
I don't remember what it is, to be honest. I don't think we've ever had to worry about it.
So I, I guess, just moving back to this, the current motion that is on the table, I think personally, even though I made it, I would prefer to move to send a no, with the findings being that we don't think the process is sufficient, and that we aren't comfortable voting on something that we don't actually know will be adopted. And so if this...
So procedurally, how does this work, I guess? Did you just amend your motion to postpone?
Well, is that an amendable motion?
That's a good question.
Can he rescind his emotion, his motion, and his emotions?
Well, yeah, we're looking. I don't think I can rescind it, but if I can amend it, I'll just amend it.
Mr. Chairman, would you like some clarification on the program?
Yes, if you have them. I have, I have a cheat sheet, but we don't often run into this.
I might. I think that what you're talking about is a motion for reconsideration, and the rules for a motion for reconsideration is the motion maker from the original motion makes a motion to reconsider, the same second has to second it. The body would then vote to reconsider or not, and if you vote to reconsider, then you can then take the matter up again.
Okay. I was under the assumption that that was specifically on actions taken?
Yeah, that was my understanding.
No, no action was taken on that motion yet?
Right, we just have a seconded motion. I think, can I, I think I can amend it.
You could withdraw.
A motion to postpone may be amended.
So I'd like to amend the motion to postpone. Well...
The, the other option is you could vote it down, and then make a new motion.
I think the simplest thing is to just vote it down, and then I'll make another motion.
All right, is there any other debate on the motion, on the motion to postpone? All those in favor of postponing? All those opposed? Any abstentions?
No, I apologize. I had, are we voting to?
To postpone.
Postpone it, okay.
Would you like me to recall the vote?
Yes, if you don't mind.
All those in favor of postponing the vote? All those opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously.
So now, I'd like to make a motion to make a negative finding on this, and the findings would be that we find that there's been insufficient public process, and that, more importantly, we actually don't know the exact nature of the zone that we would be adopting.
I second that motion.
If we could just get a little bit of a clarification, the, the insufficient public process, I think, is around applying this zone to the Court Street area?
No, sorry, I'd like to make an amendment and retract that piece of it.
How about this? Leave it, leave it the way it is. What I'll do is, I will, I will, I will make a motion to amend, to read that the planning board does not recommend to the city council to make a text amendment suggested by council with creation, oh, is this the right?
Gets confused. Actually, you know what? I'm fine with it saying the process, because the process is that we don't actually know what we would be voting to adopt.
I'm still making...
Because it hasn't been adopted yet. So that's...
Helps me understand.
I'm still, I'm still making the motion, though. So tell me if this gets it. To amend the motion to read that, to not, to forward a negative, how would you say this? That, that, to recommend that the city not amend the T four two to T four two B for the Court Street area, with a total area of, having been suggestive amendment of 1,687.41 acres, shown on the map, Exhibit A, due to process concerns, specific to not knowing what the final language of T four two B will be.
Yep, I second that.
Discussion?
Is there, well, no. I made a, okay, so there's a motion to amend to the motion to read as, as I just read it. Is there a discussion?
Yes, you were specific to Court Street only?
Yes.
That's, that's the item we're considering right now.
Okay. So that's how it has to be?
Yeah, the other items haven't been introduced.
Yeah, the, the other items haven't even been...
So be it.
Any more discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment? Okay, there's still a main motion on the floor as amended. Any discussion on the main motion as amended? Seeing none? All those in favor? All those opposed? Mr. DuBois? We are, what?
Yeah, this is where we're, we're not even going to make unanimous. First, we need a unanimous vote of the board to take up any business after nine o'clock. So is there a motion to continue?
What do you want me to say?
I make a motion to continue with all, with items four, five, six...
No, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. We did four and five.
Yeah. To continue with items six, seven...
And five, sorry. It's got to be five. We just did four.
Yes, okay, we just, so, items five, six, seven, and eight.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Continuation of the meeting requires a unanimous vote of the planning board. At this time, we will move directly to a motion to adjourn.
We actually just went through item eight, so we need to have another motion for items nine, 10, 11.
No, we had a motion to continue specifically just those items.
Right, doesn't that just...
So we are, those are the only items we were going to, we are making a motion to continue only these items.
Just those items, got it.
Yep. So as to exclude the rest. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I mean, by default, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned.